Well, welcome to Teams Racing fans. We are here once again for the Peter Barry Memorial Stock Car Teams at Meani Speedway. Myself, Mike and Bianca, we're looking forward to this as a proud history going back to 2010.
Sure is and of course we're almost in the Wellington camp over here who are the defending champions at the minute. They are the holders of the two shields and the trophy over there. They won't be ready to give it up but there's a lot of teams here ready to fight and defend here, Mike.
Absolutely. Eleven of the best teams, two Hawks Bay, two Palmerston North, we've got the two Waikato teams as well. Young Guns last year, what a brilliant final up against the Gladiators, I know the boys were proud to win it.
Yeah, absolutely. It was phenomenal actually, better than better. I don't use the word phenomenal often but that was a great final last year. In fact, this was probably one of my favourite meetings looking back on last year because these teams here, it's not the national title but they're all about the business.
You know, when it comes to Teams Racing, they're all acting like it's a national title. We'll leave that to the Rascals, they actually hold that. They've got big shoes to fill tonight as well to defend that. We know the Maulers, they won at Huntley but that's a long time ago, back in November, they had a nightmare at the Nationals, they want to bounce back.
Yeah, I mean, the Nationals was a mixed bag for everybody. I think there were a lot of surprises, especially with the Stratford team as well. They had, they've got a lot to prove as well. Totally different looking team though, the Wellington Young Guns with the exclusion of course of Ben Ellis. He took on the Pumas all by himself and actually came out the victor. I don't think anyone's going to forget that race in a while but this is a brand new looking team. I think with the inclusion too of Jaden Ty, he will be racing his dad at the very last race this evening. He's of course in the Pumas. Brendan Ty, that is going to be the race for me. I spoke to Brendan last night, he's looking forward to giving one to Jaden.
Yeah, I'm sure they will as well, I look forward to that for sure. The six cars, we saw that at their superstocks, how that changed the dynamic on qualifying night, I expect the same.
Yeah, absolutely. Actually, this rule is such a good change in the teams, all the drivers feel a heck of a lot safer when they're actually called upon and they can drive their own car rather getting in a foreign car. They could be, you know, a bit wider, a bit broader, a bit taller and this definitely is a game changer for Teams Racing across the country.
Now, we know the drivers were all set to go racing last night but we just had way too much rain, too much moisture in the track. The guys have been working tirelessly, we've been watching them go around to sort out this track, they're still out there tyre prepping it now, literally half an hour before it starts and the track now is actually starting to look pretty good.
Yeah, I can't believe the change in the track, Mike. When I first seen it when I arrived here at about three o'clock, I thought, oh god, there's no way they're going to bring that back. It's actually looking like a really good, dry, racy track at the minute.
Yeah, well Peter Black did say, once the sun got on it, baked it a little bit, we were able to roll it with the vehicles and now get the big roller out there and actually flatten the track down. I tell you what, if we had a sprint car or a Super Saloon on there, it would be track record.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Like I say, I'm really surprised and really impressed how they brought that back so quickly too, with minimal machinery I must say.
Yeah, the magicians, that's what they are. So we go back to 2010, that's when this event started. It's had a long history with wet meetings, there's seven rain affected meetings throughout the history of this. This is only the 12th staging. Covid disrupted it one time, couldn't run it at all and then of course Cyclone Gabrielle came through two or three years ago and devastated everything, lost our iconic one-way bridge to get into here at Meani but we came bouncing back strong. Maulers won it and then we went to 2022 and can't even for the life of me remember who won that one but those last two years have been brilliant.
Yeah, absolutely. And too, if you just look around the pits, everyone was always glad to be here. Of course, we had a pull-out of the Auckland Early Cats.
Yeah, the Early Cats.
Yeah, really surprising but of course, for whatever reason, they will be missed because they were really strong last year. I did see Blake Brooks hanging around though so I might be able to go and have a quick chat with Blake Brooks and see how the team might be faring for, you know, the future and what have you and be really interesting to see why they're not here. Not throwing any shade on any team whatsoever but be interesting to know.
See, the 12-team format, that is your perfect format because you've got your four groups of three in each group, top scoring goes straight through to semis, onto finals, et cetera. Now we've got the 11 teams, we're taking the four highest scoring teams, there could be some ties in points throughout that, we'll have to see how that works out tonight. And then those four teams obviously going through to semis and finals, fifth through to eighth place are just going to race off for those positions. For everybody else, it's consolation.
Yeah, absolutely. And I just want to put a plug in tomorrow, for those finals, sorry tomorrow. If you haven't been keeping your eye on social media, the finals start tomorrow at 3pm.
Yeah, that'll be an interesting one. We haven't had an afternoon meeting here at Meani for a very, very long time. We are predicting it's going to be nice and warm so hopefully fill the grandstands and gives that track more time to dry out as well.
Yeah, absolutely. And seeing what they did today, I think that track is going to be in top, top condition tomorrow, Mike.
Let's talk about our mate Stew Russell here, he's team manager tonight for the Pumas team. Now, the Pumas went back-to-back championships, 2011-12, it's a long time between drinks for them but they were the first team to ever reach three finals in a row.
Yeah, I mean Palmerston always have the good, strong teams on paper. This year, you know, it hasn't gone their way, absolutely it hasn't. It'd be really good to see if there's a change in tactics or maybe bring some new tactics in. I mean, if we're talking about tactics, I think the best tactic I've actually seen on the track was from the Stormers this year where they actually came out of turn three and four, three abreast, position one, two and three. It was so good to see and I thought, that is absolutely deliberate because of the formation that they were in. It confused all the drivers so much, it didn't matter who they took out because they were in position one, two and three. I wonder if we will see tactics like that again? The other tactic that I absolutely loved actually was in Wellington a couple of years ago when the Christchurch team picked off one driver at a time. Two cars, one driver demolished the team so might be, well hopefully, we'll see some tactics coming back into racing.
Absolutely, we'll see tactics, no question about that. But the thing is, it's a team that can adapt and change their tactics, that can do well here tonight. We've got to give a thank you out to Napier City Council, so proactive for motorsport here in Hawks Bay and also our sponsor Century Batteries. We're going to go and chat to some drivers.
Yeah, they're actually in the drivers' meeting at the minute, we're waiting for them to all come out and of course, we're trying to keep our eye behind us. They'll be here with us shortly but what we might be able to do is actually go speak to some crew or some managers. What do you think, Mike?
Yeah, I've just spotted Earl Levine over at the Young Guns, we've got to talk to Big Earl so we're just going to take a short walk over here. Oh, look, Stew Russell's here. Actually, we'll grab Stew Russell for the Pumas team. What are you doing over here in the Young Guns?
I was just talking with little baby Riley Levine in his great outfit that he's got, you'll probably see it later on but he's supporting the Pumas this weekend so I thought I'd come and say g'day to the little fellow.
Are you just here as well to have a look at what a polished team is?
Ooh, yeah, nah, hey, these guys are awesome and you know, with young Jaden Ty down there and we've got Brendan and yeah, hey, these guys are cool so I thought I'd just come and say g'day and catch up with them. I thought they had some good-looking sausages on the barbie and I'll save ours for later.
Nice, got to have a snag mate. Hey, hang on, 13 years since the Pumas won this championship?
Thanks, cheers.
Is that unlucky 13 or is that lucky this year?
Maybe we need to change it then I suppose, isn't it? So, yeah, maybe it's lucky, hopefully we just get rid of it and yeah, don't make it 14.
How are the nerves for you as a team manager?
Um, yeah, yeah, they are a little bit there. I do get nervous, I know even Hilty over there gets nervous with the Young Guns but you've got six guys out there, you pick the six guys you've got because they're the best in the business in your club so you have every bit of faith in your drivers and you have, you know, all the belief that they can do the job no matter what four you put on track. So, yeah, the only nerves is just making sure that, I guess I picked the right four drivers to put on the track but we've got a good support team behind us as well so yes, it is what it is.
And lastly, name some of your main sponsors for the team?
Jack Link's of course, X Carts, Palmerston North, Pet Travel, those are three awesome sponsors we couldn't do without but I mean, we can't do without all of them. Total Sheep Medals, Winnie Ader Anderson Sheep Medals, Screenworks, Stickerworks, Davis Contracting, there's a lot there, Desire Jewelry, Custa, not Custom Paint Works, we've got some, there's a paint shop, Collective Paint Works I think it is, Ethan Rees and there's a few others in there as well.
Yeah, don't quit your day job, hey, good luck tonight.
Yeah mate, I'll talk to him in front of our team another day I suppose, then I'll remember the sponsors.
All right, Bianca's behind you.
Yeah, I am, I'm going to have a quick chat with Hilton Parker. Hilton, I might just suggest with seeing Stew Russell just exit left, you might have to check some of your field tanks, make sure he didn't put some sugar down there or something.
Yeah, I know, he's been over here trying to work out our tactics I think.
Maybe he needs to find some for his own team, right?
Exactly, yep.
Hey Hilton, glad to have you here of course, defending champions of last year, totally new look team from a couple of weeks ago with the inclusion of course of the two Levine brothers so do you think that ups your chances at all?
Ah, yeah, you know, we're bringing in some experience this time round so unfortunately they were unavailable for the New Zealand and yeah, to have them back in the team's body, awesome. So, you know, we've bought three of the, four of the other boys that were in that Roaderoo and you know, this is going to be a good experience from again as well so we'll see how we go.
Absolutely, I think you've got a really good mix of experienced and new drivers who are really still hungry for the end prize, especially the likes of Jaden Ty.
Oh, exactly, you know, Jaden's been around the speedway since he was a kid as well and you know, he's been dying for this moment so I was just glad to bring him into the team and give him a shot at it and you know, his old man and his granddad are both, you know, good at what they do so hopefully Jaden's just as good.
Hopefully he's got more brains than both of those two put together but listen, I did speak to Brendan last night and he said, I really want to race Jaden to see if I can give him a bit of a snot up the backside and it looks like his dreams have come true. Do you think you might unleash Jaden and Brendan on the same track?
Yeah, well, we'll have a talk about that one and see but yeah, we don't want them two having a head-to-head and not, yeah, killing each other.
I think it'd be a revenge on a lot of people there but listen, good luck with the weekend of course, the drivers are still in a drivers briefing so we might come down and even speak to them in the Grand Parade but Hilton, wish you all the luck in the world.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Yes, always appreciate your words, we'll see if we can carry on down the line. Hey, Mike, it looks like you've got somebody important to talk to too.
Yeah mate, I managed to find a driver out of the Rascals camp, 87R, Chris Shingleton. Just coming out of drivers briefing, what are the referees going to focus on?
Oh, mainly pole line infringements, disengaging on the grass, taking on the grass and speeding on the orange light.
Pretty much most of the usual stuff.
Oh, and seeking centuries, so yeah.
I think seeking centuries has come really to the fore.
Yeah, it has, it's something that you don't want to do, it's pretty frowned upon, especially in our team so you just take it.
Rascals are coming here with a big reputation to uphold that NZ title?
Um, yep, but have we put any more pressure on ourselves? Nah, 100%, this is a completely different meeting, different title. We won that back at Roaderoo so we're here to try and get the Peter Barrys the same as all the other 10 teams that are here so we'll give it everything as will everyone else.
I think looking at your stats for the season, I think it's 11 teams races, 10 wins.
Yeah, I seen that yesterday on Snapchat as well and I was like, a bit of pressure on us eh, so we'll try and keep that going.
And the boys are all feeling it, good with that six car as well, bringing in that extra team member?
Yeah, yeah, 100%. Well, we've actually only got five cars, we lost one early through the week through to engine damage but um, hey, we've got five good cars, good drivers and they all know what to do so no more pressure than normal.
Yeah, well, it's no different to how it normally is with the five but do you think at the end of the time, end of the weekend, it might be a hindrance?
Nah, race smart and yeah, just race smart and don't do those dumb shots as you would say. Hey, we won the New Zealand's with the same four cars so why can't we do this?
Absolutely, and you must have some good sponsors on there to back the team?
Oh, 100%, we've got some real good sponsors. Don't put me on the spot because I don't know them all off by hand but yeah, we've got TWS, Makita, Wholesale Tires, The Tool Shed, Best Insulation, who else have we got on there? I know there's some others but I can't, I don't know who they all are. Oh, Island Earth Movers, yeah.
You did a pretty good job, Chris. Hey, good luck tonight for the Rascals.
Yeah, thanks Mike.
Thank you.
Guys, I'm just going to actually grab the man of the moment, who is, Jaden Ty. Jaden, now I've been talking you up all night, you're running from me, you can't be scared of me and my little microphone.
Yeah, nah, not scared, no, never.
Hey, listen, your number of course, 269W, it's going to be like a red flag to a bull if you're on the flag, if you're on the track with your dad tonight, what do you reckon?
Yeah, well, we got him race two, our last race out, so should be all go, he's been saying all weekend, he just wants me to hit him or him to hit me so should be good fun.
Do you know what, I can absolutely 100% guarantee that you would give him a good thrashing if you've given the chance but he might take it easy on you. You're his boy, I don't think he's going to actually wreck the car that he extra has to come around and fix.
Nah, it's Teams Racing, he'll hit me hard, it's all right. I know what I signed up for and it's good fun anyways so we'll see how we go.
What do you reckon mum will say if he does?
Oh nah, mum's already had a hard term with him, saying he's not allowed to hit me and all that but yeah, we both kind of said we'll give him the thumbs up while we're going past mum and the crowd there so yeah, should be good fun.
Listen, I tell you, I cannot wait for that race, I hope that you guys are both out there together but listen, good luck, go and join your team, I can see you guys are all getting ready and getting in that right headspace, Jaden. Welcome back to Teams Racing, so good to have you here.
Awesome, thanks Sam.
Cheers, cheers guys. Let's see, we will carry on down the line and so.
I am here Bianca, I'm welcome back with the new North Island champion out of the Gladiators camp, Brad McGee. He was a little bit reluctant to come over. Gisborne Gladiators coming here as finalists last year.
Yeah, this is, well, new for me this year anyway, I've sort of jumped on board with these guys and actually done all the teams meetings for them so it's been good, I've been enjoying getting out there with them and getting a part of their team.
How's the build-up been?
Um, well, short for me, obviously I was in Auckland last weekend so it's been a quick turnaround and had a pretty busy last sort of five or six weeks, I've been all over the country so.
Winning that championship must have filled you with a lot of confidence.
Uh, it was just good to get one under my belt, I was close this year at the GP, I was come up short with only a lap to go and yeah, it was good to get something under my belt.
I don't know too much of your history but how many seasons have you been in the stock car?
Uh, six or seven now and then I run the superstock as well so we're pretty busy.
And the boys are up for it here tonight obviously, you guys got six cars here tonight?
Uh, five cars, we had one pull-out, he's just too busy with work but we'll be sweet, we're all sort of ready to go and amped to get out and do some more racing.
And what's the deal with Willie Stevenson in the team?
Oh, he's now a Gisborne registered car, he's done teams champs with us and he's actually been, I've seen him for the last few weeks, whether he's just been there supporting or he's been racing so yeah, it's good to have him.
He's a good guy Willie and I'll tell you, I think he'd be an asset to your team.
Yeah, yeah, no, everyone in the team's an asset so it'll be good.
So you're just in drivers briefing, same old, same old there with what the referee goes through?
Uh, yep, yep, same as normal, same procedures and yeah, now to get in the right mindset and sort of get ready to go out and have a go.
And can you name any sponsors that you want to thank for backing the team?
Uh, WG Goos, he's our main sponsor for the year, he's been awesome. Roaderoo is on the tools hard out with everyone and yeah, I'm not too sure on the rest of them so I won't start listing them off but he's our main man.
It looks like you've got a, is that a little Gladiators flag, is it? Going to wave that?
Yeah, we'll give that a wave for everyone.
Hey, thanks for chatting Brad and good luck.
Cheers, thank you.
So I am down here, now it is a bit of a walk in between these cars, I do apologise but I actually have lined up John Booker who of course is the manager for the Stratford Scrapers. I'm just going to take a wander over to them while you guys make your way down the line. Now of course, John Booker, synonymous in Speedway, we'll just wait for this car to go by. Gentlemen, how are you? I just wanted to have a quick word with John, he's running away from me. John, first of all, welcome to Meani, it's a gorgeous, gorgeous day up here. Tell us, you guys are such a strong, strong team on paper, what are your expectations for this weekend's racing?
Yeah, all the expectations of the racing is going to be tough anyway like it is with any teams racing. We might be all right on paper but it doesn't always go that way. We do have troubles, like I say, everybody, every team has troubles and mechanical problems so it could go anyway but we'll just see what the track is like. The Meani team have done as much as they can to get this meeting up and going so and it's the same for everybody so let's, yeah, we'll do our best eh?
Absolutely, you're 100% right, they have done everything they can, it looks like it's in really good condition at the moment. Have you had a chance to have a look at it since you arrived this afternoon?
Oh, we had a quick look but they were still playing with it and once we get out there for our Grand Parade, we'll know and see what happens with it out there then, yep.
Yeah, absolutely. Listen, you've got a few members changing from last time that I've seen you but pretty much still a really, really strong team and I'm glad that Tyler Walker has made the track over too.
Yeah, nah, it's great to see him come around and you know, he loves us Teams Racing, I love my Teams Racing. I haven't been to Meani for a few years now and with Chuck Paul Johnson in the squad, he's very knowledgeable at Teams Racing so yeah, let's hope that it all turns around for him and he gets a shot at it.
Absolutely and of course Tyler Walker's a new 3, sorry, North Island so he's had a lot of racing under his belt in this car this season.
Yeah, no, he has, and he's, you can't take anything away from Tyler, he'll just be able to drive a pedal car, you know, the wheels off a pedal car and he's good at that so yeah. And most of the drivers are, you know, in our team, they put 110% in and I expect 110% out of them, you know? So yeah, no, it's good, so yeah. And like I say, myself and Munchy and thanking all the sponsors that get behind this lot and I think they've done well so let's carry on and perform the way they have been going.
If motorsport is in your blood, then Speedway Garage Palmerston North and Wonganui is your home away from home. From Speedway trivia nights, car reveals and good dirt track banter along with great food that has our famous steaks, roast of the day and classic pub meals, Speedway Garage is the place to be. We look forward to hosting you at one of our two locations, 528 Main Street Palmerston North or 45 Anzac Parade Wonganui. Don't forget to check out the Pitts TV Garden Bar, see you at the finish line. Hesels Poultry Farm is a family-run business situated in the heart of the Horofenua that produce over 800,000 eggs a week to your community. With 60 years' experience, this fourth generation business know how to look after their customers. They truly are locals looking after locals all over New Zealand. Head into your local supermarket and make sure you ask for New Day Free Range Eggs or Morning Harvest Eggs. Hesels Poultry Farm, supply fresh, quality eggs to your local community, they are the pride of Foxton.
Here come your Teams Race fans, we have Regan O'Brien and Bianca Mudge, pit side and in the middle here tonight to bring you all the information. It's Wellington out first. Defending champions it is, the Young Guns out onto the track first, the first driver there, 5W Keegan Levine, followed there by the 7W Harrison Hocking, the 21 Tim Parker, 46 Ethan Levine, the 47 of Anthony Hocking and the 269 of Jaden Ty. Their manager this weekend, Hilton Parker.
Here we go, here come the, this is one person that I want to speak to is Ricky Lee for sure, we're going to get her off the car and first time, oh, look at her, she's saying, I don't want to speak to you Bianca, yes you do Ricky, you knew I was going to get you. First of all Ricky, well done and congratulations on making the Palmerston North Colts team, it's a huge effort for you two to make it here.
Yeah, it's definitely a big step, definitely a bit nervous but I think when I get out there, I'll be all right.
Ricky, has anyone spoken to you about how to keep those nerves at bay for today?
Uh, yep, our managers have been real good, we had a good team meeting, the other, Munzie and Wayne Verco, they've teams raced before out of all of us and yeah, they've gave us some real good pointers so it's real good.
Ricky, when you seen yourself in a stock car at the beginning of the season, did you think that you'd be able to make it into a team?
Not really, well, I wasn't really aiming for a team, well, you know, so early but the opportunity came up so I thought, might as well, you know?
Absolutely, it's great experience. Listen, anyone who's listening, anyone who's watching, this girl here, 23P Ricky Lee Cowdy, put her in your diaries because she is going to go well not only this, this weekend but next season, she's going to be the car to watch. Good luck Ricky, I'll let you go and collect yourself together but before you leave, I want some lollies. Good luck, go hard.
Thank you, see you later.
Cheers. These guys are motoring out of the gate at the minute so it's a bit hard to get them off their cars but I think some of them, the best we can do is maybe a thumbs up. Would love to speak to Taylor Lamp on the back of this car.
Yeah, Stratford Stormers looking mighty strong out there Bianca, manager John Booker.
Hey Taylor, how's it going mate?
Yeah, not bad, how are we all going?
Good, good, so a big trip up from the Terranaki for you, we put on the sunshine today.
Yeah, nah, it was a big drive eh? Yeah, definitely better today, it'll be good.
Nah, so how's the confidence in the team, they looking forward to getting out there tonight and hopefully staying tonight, tomorrow for the top four?
Yeah, definitely, we're ready to go eh, we come here to, you know, put on a good show and we're going to go through.
Awesome mate, have a good night and good luck eh?
Cheers.
Next team out from Gisborne, the Gisborne Gladiators. I tell you what, if a Hawks Bay team can't win it this weekend, my next sentimental favourite has to be the Gladiators. Finalists last year unfortunately, just coming up slightly short.
Guys, so Kane McDonald's tracking me, I was like, what's your name? He's like Kane, I'm like, yeah mate, but you're normally driving out of Wellington.
Yep, that's me.
Tell me, are you contracted to Giszi now just for this event or are you contracted to Giszi now for the rest of the season?
Uh, no, no, I've just filled in for them this week so go out there and give it a go, good go.
Absolutely, I mean, you're no stranger to Teams Racing as well Kane, pretty tough man and a really, really hard man to beat as well.
Sorry, I missed the last bit.
I know, these cowbells Ricky's loving it. I'm just saying, you're a very, very tough man to beat so you're one to watch out for in this Teams Racing.
Oh yeah, I love it eh, the car just keeps going so I can't pull off if it's still going, can I?
No, no, and you know what, we should make a rule, no matter what you do, any technical issues, do not pull into the infield, stay on the track.
Nah, I think that's why the boys love it eh, whenever I go out, they know I'll give it 100 and yeah, I'm not going to the infield if I don't have to.
Absolutely, Kane, you're missing one thing though, lollies for my pocket, I'll come and see you later, hopefully you're going to bucket, go and join the team, good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Cheers.
All right, next team that's just come out on the track is your Waikato Raiders Red Team, that's the 4H of Josh Humble, 7 Hamish White, 8 is Larry Henderson, 24 Brad Philpot, 32 Jaden Dread and Manning, 97 of Casey Cheatham and the manager Lance Moore. Lance is going to be busy tonight, he is managing both of these Waikato Raiders teams. Got to love a set of cowbells.
We're trying to pull these, oh, here we go, here we go, we're trying to pull these, you've seen it, didn't you, we're trying to pull the drivers off the car and they'll say, no, no, next person, next person but listen, you're on your way to talk to Regan, were you?
Hey man, so I was just talking to you earlier on today and the last time you Teams raced was the Peter Barrys, about what, seven, eight years ago?
Yeah, seven years ago for the Early Cats, yeah.
For the Early Cats and here you are tonight back here for the old Waikato team eh, so you're looking forward to it?
Yeah, yeah, nah, looking forward to it, loving it, we've done maybe five or six Teams Races this year.
Yeah, I've seen you up in Roaderoo eh, and you're the old Dave Moore come back again.
Yeah, well, just having fun man.
Ah, that's the one, hey, good luck for tonight and let's bring some more of that Dave Moore Peter Barry style eh? Awesome mate, thanks.
Hey Regan, I don't know about you at all but, I'm no track expert but this still feels kind of tacky, it looks in so much better condition but what do you reckon it's going to do tonight?
Oh, it's going to be a driving track tonight, there's going to be no dust, there's going to be heaps of grip and with heaps of grip, hopefully we get heaps of carnage so it's going to be a good night.
Listen, there's always going to be carnage with these, especially this guy here, Hadley Dixon, come and have a chat with us Hadley.
Yeah, Bay Park Bulldogs just come out onto the track.
Oh, look, he's got a big, a big bag of lollies too, come on, get over here Hadley, Hadley, come and have a chat mate.
I'll quickly get in with Chloe.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
How you doing, are you enjoying this?
I love this, it's great.
What's up with the tank, I see you've got the tank tonight?[1647.12] What's up with the tank, I see you've got the tank tonight?
I just got to bring it out for a play.
Yeah, hey, it's a good beast that one there and you know, you've got the space frame, you're flying in that thing, but that tank takes a beating, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does.
Awesome, hey, good luck for tonight and go hard.
Thank you.
Hey, I noticed that Hadley Dixon, your car isn't here. Can you tell us what's happened to it?
Just a little misfiring issue, just hopefully it's going right and make sure it's 100% rather than having it out here idling too much. It's a new engine, so crew's all on to it at the moment, trying to get rid of the miss, so yeah.
That's the name of the game, isn't it Hadley? You guys can come out here and do your job, but it takes one heck of a crew to be able to pull it all together.
Oh yeah, like we've got an awesome team that help us out, you know, experienced behind it and everything. It's awesome, you know, like we went to put our cars out at the workshop and I dropped a couple of bolts out of my duff and yeah, so we had to fix that, like it didn't happen on the track, but yeah, so nah, yeah, it's good. It happened off the track, so yeah, hopefully it's all in one piece after the first night.
Mate, you cause carnage both on and off the track, but listen, go join your team. Oh, they left you for dead mate, you're off, see you later.
Yeah, Hawks Bay, let's hear it for your mighty Maulers team.
Right, talking about the Maulers, I've got Bradley Singer down here. Hey mate, how's it going, the old Peter Barry's? Last year with the Ruffies, this year with the Maulers.
Yeah mate, bloody exciting eh? To make my debut last year here with the Ruffies and made a fool of myself, losing my kid and all that and I really set the standard high for this year for myself, so yeah.
And also the season's been going well for you, you know, Hawks Bay champs and all that, you've done well. Tonight, as long as you can keep your clothes on, you'll go well eh?
Yeah mate, that's the plan.
Awesome mate, hey, good luck and go hard.
Yeah, Regan, I don't think he made a fool of himself last year, I think he made a name for himself.
Exactly Mike, and I think that's why he's been dragged into these Maulers this year because he done really well last year for a newbie.
Hey, another guy making a name for himself of course, Mr Levine over here, you've done a lot of laps this season, you're currently the 2NZ in the Super Stock. Here you are this weekend trying out your teams prowess.
Yes, oh, it's been a while since I've actually raced a stock car, but yeah, we're here, we're ready, we're back into it.
There's always one, right?
Yeah, there's always one. Of course, it's the Palmer guy eh, smash the P.
Smash the P, all right. Hey, you guys are the defending champions, Wellington did so well in this meeting last weekend. What do you think your, sorry, last year, not last weekend, last year, what do you think your chances are again this year?
Oh, we always come with a chance, you know? Yeah, we're here, we're ready to defend and we're ready to take back what we already have.
Absolutely, now, listen, my feet are sinking ever so slowly into this track. I've asked Regan what he thought of it, he said it's going to be drivvy with a lot of carnage. Is that your thoughts as well?
Oh, Regan doesn't know anything about a track.
So what do you reckon?
I reckon, yeah, it'll be quite heavy, probably end up getting quite rutty, but yeah, I would say the first couple of races will be a bit loose and then after that, yeah, it probably will be drivvy, but there'll be driving the holes as well.
Now, you guys are actually coming out, are you, what race are you the... I had my programme, I've already lost it, you might know.
I'm the wrong person to ask this question to. I know that our first race of the night will be against Stratford, which will be their second race of the night, so we are later in the programme.
So you must be the last two races then out of the round?
Yeah, something like that.
Okay, listen, so that'll give this track a lot of time to settle down before you come out on it.
Yeah, when we come out, the track will be optimal condition, so we'll be ready to go.
Yeah, Bianca, they come out in race 6 and 11.
Race 6 and 11, Mike tells me.
Yeah, sweet, sounds good. Look at Regan's bald head over there eh, it's like a little egg.
I love it.
Hey, listen, good luck Ethan, thanks for your words.
Right, we saw the Palmerstern North Pumas come out on the track as well. They are former two-time champions, but 13 years since they won that title. And then also the second Hawks Bay team, the Orange Ruffies. Give them a cheer, race fans. Here come your New Zealand champions, the Rotorua Rascals.
Tony G, welcome, I'm always running into you in the strangest places. Listen, really, really tough team that you guys have brought down from Rotorua. Only two cars out in the Grand Parade though, where's, oh no, everyone's else up there. I was going to say, that ditched you already.
Yeah, no, she's a bit of a soft track out here, so that would be to grab two of those Makita Utes and a massive shout out to them for helping us as always and being by our side all season. But yeah, a little bit of a, a couple of fresh faces in the Rascals this weekend. We've got Cullum, he's actually doing a pretty good job down there in the Rees Tour at the moment. He's getting a few podiums in that and Deion, he's sold up. So yeah, Jamie's lost a motor, so yeah, we've got a few fresh faces there.
How do you predict, I mean, obviously you can't predict things like this when they come up, but these issues of course, do they change your tactics or your strategy at all?
We've sort of got a bit of a theory behind it all, you know, I've come up with a bit of a formula that we use as the Rascals as a whole now and yeah, no, that doesn't really change to be fair, we're just going to carry on doing the same thing and you know, like I say, we haven't got a single formula, we've got a few formulas that we use depending on the team we come up against, so yeah, nah, it's looking forward to it and these boys bringing them in, you know, we need to create some depth, you know, we can't always race with the same guys, they're not always available, which is, yeah, pure example of now.
Yeah, absolutely, if we rewind back 12 months, Deion Henderson was absolutely phenomenal last year. He actually went in backwards in this corner here, but he definitely made a name for himself in that weekend, didn't he?
Yeah, no, we shouldn't talk about Deion, he's not here, no one actually cares.
I care, poor Deion, he's probably watching, you're going to, you're going to get it. Listen, Deion is moving on to other commitments and what have you in the Speedway world and we wish him all the luck, but he will be sorely missed.
Yeah, no, we might see Deion again next year as well. There's some plans, whether they buy another race car or whether they lease one or something for the whole season. Yeah, we're not too sure which direction that's going to head at the moment, so yeah, he's got that Super Stock, he's a pretty good weapon, you know, and they've got the Bay of Plenty champs back at home, so yeah. So the Rotorua boys that are back there at the Bay of Plenty Stock Car champs look after each other and don't let them out of town to win that one.
Yeah, hopefully, but listen, that's probably the end of all of our chit chats on the Grand Parade. Tony, you better go and catch your team. You could probably just wait here and chill and eat some of the lollies with me because they're a long way away.
Yeah, nah, I'm not going all the way down there, I'm too old for that stuff now.
And last time I seen you, you were all strapped up, but you're all healed now.
Yeah, nah, people can stop giving me grief about my calf actually, I'm all good. The hip's still sore, but you know, the calf, she's all right.
Good work because you're going to be chasing around these drivers all night, but listen, good luck Tony. Mike, we'll go back up to your own.
Yeah, thanks guys, great work. Let's have a look at some of the advertisers in our programme here. I've got to mention there because NZ Safety Blackwoods, massive sponsor here at Meani Speedway and there's an advert in the programme and this is a really cool-looking programme. It's one that you could keep as a souvenir. In the NZ Safety Blackwoods advert, there's also a competition within a competition here. You could win an Epic Power Tool Pack up to $1,500, but there's a QR code down in the bottom right-hand corner. We need you to scan that QR code because that sends it back to NZ Safety Blackwoods and tells them that people at the Speedway are seeing their adverts, scanning it and they're getting hits from it and they keep giving us product to give away. Tomorrow night I'll have some NZ Safety Blackwoods booty bags that I will give away and also one of our main sponsors here this weekend, Century Batteries. I've got some amazing prize packs that they gave me that I will be giving away as well. Well, there's your teams, race fans, absolutely fantastic-looking lineup, 11 teams. They're all going to be going for this New Zeal, for this Peter Barry Memorial Stock Car Teams title. It is the 15th year, it's only the 12th staging. If you're new to stock car teams racing and you're not sure about how the format works, you will see four cars from each team line up on the grid with the team that wins pole electing either to take the inside or the outside of those grids. And the point situation works as 100 points for the win. So you really want to get a car across the line first to get that major share of points. Second place is 40 points, third is 25, fourth is 20 and fifth is 10 points. And with just two qualifying races for each team tonight, they really, really need to be up around that 140 points mark in each of those races to try and guarantee themselves a chance at being one of those four teams of the highest scoring that can go through to tomorrow night's semi-finals and finals.
The right machinery and attention to detail is what it takes to produce precision engineering. At Phantom Engineering, they can do exactly that. Whether it's a race car or trailer build or even alterations, through to anything you need built for the home, your work or the farm. Come and chat to our team that will take the hassle away. The right gear, the right knowledge and the right team. Phantom Engineering, 317 Waikato Highway, Melbourne, New Zealand.
If you break it, we can fix it. If you want it, we can build it at Phantom Engineering.
Anderton Decorators are a long-established canary company covering the whole of the South Island who love to support their local community. If you require expert advice from design to application, then Shane has the expert team to ensure your next project is hassle-free with a professional finish. Floor to ceilings, walls to roof, inside, outside, commercial or residential, let our team take the hassle out of your decorating. Give us a call now on 027 PAINTING, that's 027 724 6846. Anderton Decorators, we have you covered.
Whoo, here we go, race fans, this is race number one of the Napier City Council. Century Batteries, Peter Barry Memorial Stock Car Teams. The first team out onto the track, the Stratford Stormers, 32 of Todd Duffy, 33 Tyler Walker, 55 is Paul Johnson, 84 Hayden Barker, 742 of Stephen Reed and the 992 of Taylor Lamp. We'll just run through that once again, the 32S of Todd Duffy, 33 of Tyler Walker, 55 is Caleb Coxhead, 84 Hayden Barker, 742 Stephen Reed and the 992 of Taylor Lamp. Their team manager tonight, John Booker. And up against the Palmerstern North Colts, first time we will see them on the track, the 11P of Brendan Rees, 16 is Wayne Verco, 23, a debut for Ricky Lee Cody, 39 Graham Munn, 63 is Zeon McNab and the 77 of Curtis Tenere. So hot laps have been run and first of the Stormers' cars going to the three-minute bell here in front of the pit gate. Last-minute adjustments usually, dialing in some suspension perhaps. Palmerstern North cars heading to the infield, three of them, four of them going to the infield, so three-minute bell, not much of a concern for them right now, in fact, all five. Track conditions, yep, they've taken the top off of that surface, but it doesn't look too bad, it's still a little bit slushy obviously. So the drivers here, once they park up for the three-minute bell, they cannot be released until David Jones with the red flag allows them to be. If a car moves, there's dire consequences. Regan O'Brien, you know all about this.
Yeah, as you can see down here, they've got the jacks out. They've got the jacks out, they're doing turns on the front, so you know, there's a tape gun up on the window for the sun. Obviously, there's too much drive in the car in 55, so they're taking some turns out of the front. The two cars up the front here, Tyler Walker, oh, his dad's just turning his in-car cam on, you've got to get all those hits. But yeah, tighten up the belts, couple clicks here and there. 742, you've got John Booker there, he's just looking around the front, so I don't actually know, I think John knows what he's looking for really.
Well, the Colts team seem pretty confident right now.
Yeah, look at them, those young fellows are ready to go. They're all up over there parked up, no issues with the Palmer team. But the Stratford team, there are duct tape and suspension changes by the looks. Oh, 63P, we've got one Colts down in here.
How's the driver's mindset at a time like this, just getting ready for that first teams race?
Well, for myself, when you used to be parked down here in the three-minute bell, all you're thinking is hurry up, get it going, what are we doing? Just get out of Mike Maxway, he won't stop. So yeah, I see 63P, oh, McNab, he's got the bonnet off that thing there, so let's just see if we can have a look and they're obviously playing... Looks like they're playing with, oh no, it's not a call pack, I don't think. But everyone else looks happy to go now, but just the one Palmer car, oh, seven, get over there. We've got a minute 13 to go. One minute 13, well, minute five now. Jeez, I've never seen a crescent there, big deal, up such a little nut. It must be, it's a fuel regulator, it must have been leaking a little bit of fuel, so they've got a huge crescent down there, just to nick it up, make sure it's nice and tight.
Well, it's a multi-tool, you don't, you never know if it's a big nut or a little nut.
Oh, I know, it's been fuel-injected, you don't want that leaking any fuel. So that's the last one to get any work done is yeah, McNab and make sure the fuel leaks.
Just on 30 seconds to go on the bell. Last 20 seconds, just securing the bonnet to the 63P car. David Jones once again just walked to the front and showed that red flag.
Yeah, I heard Jamie Tenere, he said some words that weren't very nice, that you can't say live TV, so I guess McNab's not going out.
And with time up, David Jones waving them off. And now we will see the dance of the grid. Palmerstern North, the Colts will go from the outside. Stormers winning the toss, electing to start on pole. Usually in a teams race, two runners, two blockers, you'll see drivers get on the brake once the green lights come on. One of the things that was talked about by the referees and the officials in the drivers briefing, that they will not tolerate any movement before the green light comes back on and during a red light stoppage. So those of you that are new, when the red lights come on, because there's an incident on the track, maybe an exposed cage when a car is perched up on the wall and they need to stop the race and remove that car or if there's a car upside down etcetera, then the red lights will come on and when the track is clear and they're ready to go back racing, once that red light goes out, there is a pause before the green light comes on. The referee has said, "We will not tolerate movement." So you can see the 33 of Tyler Walker on the front row for the Stormers. Outside on two, 16 of Verco for the Colts. Just been told, need to call out to 27M, get to your car please. Here we go, getting ready for the Peter Barry Memorial Stock Car Teams, race number one, straight away on the brakes. And it will be the 33 of Tyler Walker that leads out on lap number one with the 23 of Ricky Lee Cody, the debutant in second position. About to get a push and a shove there from the 84, spinning himself out as well. Hayden Barker came in, took himself out as well as Cody. Nice clear lead out there for the 33 though, but here comes the car lying in wait, the 39 of Graham Munn. Munn goes into block mode and tries to force the 33. Walker does a brilliant job and turns him around, but here comes one of the Colts drivers hard into the back of Walker, takes him into the wall at turn number three. This greasy racetrack is playing havoc with them at the moment. The 11 of Brendan Rees that is putting the push on the 33. Oh, great work by Walker to force Rees to the infield. He has to circulate around, redress that situation. You cannot stop in teams racing, keeping on the 39 car here of Graham Munn. And then we've got the 23 of Cody Lee. Ricky Lee was in that 23 already showing that she's not too intimidated by this teams racing. A big hit into the 84 by the 16, Wayne Verco, putting a big hit into the right front quarter. Well, it's definitely not a track record pace here in this first race and it doesn't need to be because this is teams racing and it's currently Stratford running 1, 2 and 3. 742 Stephen Reed, leading for the Stormers. Contact on the back straight, the 39 of Graham Munn is spun by the 84. Barker is putting in some good strategic hits. And it's all action on the main straight again as the 11 car of Brendan Rees has to redress that situation with the 32 car. Todd Duffy back out on the track. 33S is your race leader now, the Stormers still in the lead in this teams race. 742 is running shotgun, Stephen Reed, shotgun for Walker. And with four laps to go, it is still a 1, 2, 3 for the Stormers. 32 of Duffy got into the back of the 39 car of Munn and now Duffy has to contend with the 10 car, the 16 car of Verco who's chasing him. Three laps to go. Well, almost a little bit of a half-spin there for the 32 of Duffy. They are struggling with this track a little bit. It is now go time for the Colts, they have to start doing something about the top three cars that are all Stormers. 23 of Ricky Lee Cody put up the wall there, going into turn number three, straight back into the thick of it and on the bumper of the 39 of Graham Munn. Two to go. This is looking good for the Stormers. Palmerstern North cars filling out for 5 and 6. Again, another car up the wall, it's the first rollover of the night. And it's the 16 car of Verco that goes over, taken up into the wall. Verco is the one who rolled on the back straight, trying to read up the number of the car that did that.
Hey Mike, I think that car that put him up the wall was actually 32S.
32S car for Todd Duffy was really putting in some good moves and there sealed the deal there on the 16 car of Verco. Got the port of power unit out to sort out that situation. Going to a replay here and having a look. Oh yeah, he tried to slip by on the outside, but Verco got squeezed out. That was fantastic mirror work there by Todd Duffy, who saw him coming, just took him up the wall and there's that little lip at the bottom. We'll have a look at it again, this time as they're coming off turn number two, you can see him just trying to run around the outside. He then just tried to turn into the right-hand side, but Duffy was too aware of that and done a brilliant job there, that's perfect execution of how you roll a car against the wall. So you can see the crew there now just trying to figure out how that they're going to strap that car onto that port of power and be able to upright that and remove that car from the track. So they will go one car down, the Colts with the 16P of Wayne Verco out of this race. If we have a look at those results, so it's still, Stormers running 1, 2 and 3. They really are in control of this teams race and this is what they need to do. You need big points if you want to make the top four. Now, already race fans, we're seeing some great action and this is just the first of 11 teams races tonight. Brought to you by Century Batteries and Napier City Council. Track seems to be holding up alright, yes, it is greasy out there, it's the same for all of these eight cars on the track. If anything, it's slowing the hits down a little bit early on in this meeting, meaning a little bit more strategy needed. And that's exactly what Duthy did there to squeeze the 16 car against the wall. It's around about, I think, 1,400 kilos of stock car being picked up there. Please remember to stay away from the catch fences during the racing tonight, please, we just have been asked about that once again. Be aware that there might be a little bit of track surface flying up through that catch fence. Just moving back some of these cars as well, you can see there on the main straight, I think that was the 23, Ricky Lee Cody. What a great debut she's having, straight into it. Good to see these young ladies moving out from mini-stocks, and how quickly Ricky Lee has moved on into the stock car class and doing so well. That's the fantastic grounding that mini-stock racing is giving all these young drivers. You can see a bit of steam rising out of the 16 car, of course, when it's upside down like that, the fluids are in places that they shouldn't be.
Isn't it good to see more girls getting into teams' racing, eh Mike?
Oh, absolutely, and maybe one day, we will see a full ladies' team taking on the boys.
Yep, that's going to happen, I think, into the season in Palmerston North, from what I can gather, we've got the KB Cowboys versing the KB Cowgirls, so if I remember rightly, I seen something pop up the other day about the Cowgirls getting back together, so there'll be a good, good teams' race.
Fantastic. They shouldn't be too far away from going back racing, and it's showing up just as one lap to go, you can see the white flag is out. And like I say, it's not looking so good right now for this Palmerston North Colts team. They do occupy fourth and fifth place, that's not enough points. So we look straight down here in front of the com box, and we see the 39 car there of Graham Munn, is facing into the direction of traffic. He'll be given the chance to get out of that situation there, and also the 84 car of Hayden Barker in there as well. The other three cars, very well, four cars, very well separated around the racetrack. With the 7.42 of Stephen Reed for the Stormers, your race leader, currently sitting in turn number two. Keep an eye on those lights, when they go out, there will be that pause, given the chance to get out of that situation there, and also the 84 car of Hayden Barker in there. Let's go racing once again. Barker pulls reverse. 39 of Graham Munn back in the track, but Barker immediately goes on the defensive and blocks the 39 of Munn. Here come your race leaders, the checkered flag is out, the Stormers are going to storm home in race number one of the Peter Barry Memorial Stock Car Teams. 33 Tyler Walker across the line, 7.42 Stephen Reed, 32 Todd Duthy, it is a trifecta for the Stratford Stormers. So, provisional 33S Tyler Walker, taking a great win for the Stormers here as we look at the unofficial result. 33S Tyler Walker with the win, 7.42S Stephen Reed second, 32S Todd Duthy third. 23P Ricky Lee Cody, great debut, top of the Colts drivers in that first round. 84S Hayden Barker picking up points as well in fifth. And your provisional points, well, it's a stunning 175 to 20 points by the Stratford Stormers, that is a whitewash. Give them a round of applause when they come around with the checkered flag as well. It was an entertaining first race for our Peter Barry Memorial Stock Car Teams. We look forward to race number two coming up shortly, Waikato Raiders Yellow Team, and they come up against our mighty Maulers. Give them a round of applause, race fans, that was an impressive job done by the Stratford Stormers.
Yeah, there Mike, I was talking to McNab, he definitely had a fuel leak, and then pin and the gear shifter in the gearbox fell out, so he's got a holding gearbox in there, and obviously he's got a little locating pin, and then that's why the 63P couldn't race.
Well, thanks for that Regan, I'll tell you what though, the Stormers definitely went to work over the Colts.
Yeah, definitely did, Stormers team's a great team, few of those drivers, oh Hayden Barker and that, you know, they've been around for a while, teams' racing, and I'm sure this Palmer Colts team's going to come back out in the next race firing, I know they've got a couple little big hitters in their team. And obviously Ricky Lee, you know, she's done great keeping out of trouble there, so you know, she got spun up a couple of times, but she just pedaled to the metal and carried on again.
Hopefully either yourself or Bianca at some stage can talk again with Ricky Lee, and just see if the nerves have calmed down just a little bit, and what were her thoughts on that first teams' race.
Yeah, I know when Bianca caught up with her before the, the meeting, she was a little bit nervous, but hey, once, hopefully once she got out there, the nerves kicked in, and she's come in smiling and, and really loving that, so yeah, hopefully Bianca can get down there and have a quick chat with her.
Yeah, I'm making my way down there now guys, though obviously not back yet, but give me a couple of minutes, maybe after this race, and I'd be more than happy to speak to Ricky again.
Thanks Bianca, just looking at that Stormers win here in heat number one, remember this team has been in the finals three times at Peter Barry Memorial Stock Car Teams, never have they won it, losing to the Rascals, Yelly Cats, and Kings, that is not a record that you want. If they do make it through to the finals tomorrow night, they've got to make amends.
Yeah, well if they do, they'll make their trip and their long travel home tomorrow night worthwhile, so you know, hopefully Stratford go all the way and, and get to the finals, and hopefully our Maulers and our roughies will actually be there against them, and then I know who to be cheering for.
Yeah, absolutely, and talking of that, up next, race number two, the Waikato Raiders Yellow Team, coming up against the Mianie Maulers. Just bear with us as that roller goes around and just flattens out this racetrack again. Remember, grab some tasty food or something to drink if you need to while you're here at the Speedway tonight. Really is a good, healthy crowd in here, and we love it when we have a full crowd, always makes the atmosphere so much better. Very much looking forward to our Sunday meeting tomorrow, three o'clock start, I can't remember the last time we had a Sunday event.
Uh, hey guys, is it alright if I interrupt you now?
Absolutely.
I am down here with Ricky, I can, I don't have a cameraman, but if I could explain the smile on her face right now, it's literally air to air. Ricky, you survived, you did so well.
Yeah man, I got the shivers on, it was bloody buzzy, it was real cool, man, the adrenaline pump. I wasn't supposed to race that race, but unfortunately, Zon's car wasn't ready to go, so Jamie said, "Are you mentally prepared?", and I said, "Yeah, righto, we're off", so we got on that grid, and we did it, bit of an unfortunate loss, but oh well, first teams' race can't be, can't be all, you know, can't be really good all the time.
100% Ricky, I don't think the focus on anything other than, for you especially, was just to finish, get your tile out there and see how you're going, you kept it clean, and you did so well, I'm so proud.
Yeah, I did, I kept it on all fours, which was good, but yeah, definitely keen for another one, that was real fun.
Ricky, I mean, that was your first one, I know that you were super, super nervous, do you think those nerves might settle now that you've got that first one under your belt?
Oh definitely, it's not as bad as I thought it was going to be, well, I only got one good hit there, but man, the boys looked after me, and yeah, unfortunately Wayne looked like he rolled over, but that's all good.
Yeah mate, all good, listen, go and, go and talk to your team, congratulations all around, well done Ricky, I'm so proud, here's Munn, I'm so proud as well, well done.
Thank you, see you later.
Cheers guys.
Followed by the mighty Mianie Maulers, the former two-time champions back in 2014 and 21. But here is your Waikato Raiders yellows lineup. 13H Jamie Simons, 16H James Marshall, 17H is Dave Moore, 99H William White, 361H of Clinton Cheatham. And the, straight into the Mianie Maulers team as well, with the 10B of Ethan Dorwood, 27B Isaac Fothergill, 65B Royden Hind, 75B Leroy O'Reilly, the self-proclaimed fastest mare at Speedway, 78B Gibson Taut, and the Hitman, the Danger Man, the 86B Brad Singer. Well, impossible to predict outcomes in these teams' races. The Waikato Raiders team, always so solid, their team manager Lance Moore really has his hands full tonight, running both of those teams. I don't know how that's going to work out if they meet each other at some stage throughout this competition, and of course, team manager for the Maulers, Travis Dorwood.
Yeah, the other Waikato Red team is going to be managed by Larry Henderson, who's also racing. Um, so yeah, Lance is doing this team, and Larry Henderson's kind of looking after the other team.
Yeah, great, because I didn't, didn't really know how that was ever going to work out.
Yeah, it's going to be interesting, especially with Larry racing, but yeah, that's, that's what the goal was at the, at the managers' meeting. Um, but yeah, we'll, we'll see, Lance will probably come back out, because no doubt Larry will have his hands full fixing cars.
So it was at this event last year that Bradley Singer came to notice in teams' racing when he was with the roughies, managed to rip the whole body off that car.
Yeah, let's see if he can keep his, keep his body on his car tonight and keep it in one piece, but also, also there Mike, in teams' racing, the cars can stop, they're allowed to stop, it's not like the normal racing rules. And they can wait, they can sit on a whole corner for half a lap if they like.
Brilliant, thanks for clarifying that. How many Waikato fans have we got out there tonight? How many Maulers fans have we got there tonight? Well, I can't hear the reaction Regan, I don't know what it was like down there on pit side.
No, it was, it was pretty, pretty quiet. Come on you Hawks Bay fans, who's here for the Maulers? Let's go, cheer it up, that's the one, there's some hands clapping. We want these boys to come home, we don't want Waikato to win this one.
So hot laps run and done for both the Waikato Raiders Yellow and the Mianie Maulers team. Now we'll come some, see who is going to come down and face that three-minute bell with those last-minute adjustments. Sun's starting to set here in Hawks Bay as well, it could become an issue for sun strike for some of these drivers, so you may see them getting some race tape or something put across visors. I think one driver there, the 99 of William White, possibly asking for some tear-offs, I'm not sure, he was sort of doing a tear-off manoeuvre on his helmet there. So we've got the 75 of Leroy O'Reilly for the Maulers, the 99H of William White for the Raiders. And behind him there, the 17H of Dave Moore. Then the rest of the Maulers, apart from the 86 of Brad Singer, will come down into that three-minute bell area. The bell just starting now. Crew's allowed over the pit gate, straight away out there with the jacks.
Yeah, I see 99H, he's asking for, I think, some duct tape across the front window. I'm standing down here now, and yeah, the old sun's beaming, beaming right through to the old eye level in these cars, so I see Gibson Taut's the same, he's got some duct tape across the front, Royden Hind, more duct tape. I think I might get into business, the duct tape might.
Yeah, absolutely, of course, sitting up in the com box mate, I never get to see how bad it is, but we do know that the last thing you want heading into a turn at the Speedway flat out is when you hit some sun strike, and especially if there's cars just in front of you.
Yeah, definitely, nothing worse than coming down this Napier straight, can't see what's in front of you, and you look behind you, you've got a car hard coming, full noise behind you, so you don't know what's up in front, this sun glare can get pretty bad in Napier for the next probably 20 or so minutes, but nothing but a duct tape won't fix.
Fixes so many things, the old duct tape, really is a thousand applications for that stuff.
Oh yeah, I see Kevin Martin, he's a bit puff, he's puffing down here, so Willie White, so obviously he went to go and pull his tear-offs, he must have pulled the whole lot. He's got a fresh new packet coming on, so I can't remember what they do, those real flash tear-offs, that, you know, they're all stuck together.
Yeah, that's what I thought, he was signalling earlier on when he was coming in slowly, he was signalling that tear-off manoeuvre, I thought he might have needed some more.
Yeah, there's nothing worse than going to pull one tear-off and you end up pulling the full 10.
Of course, you can't use roll-offs, you know, on a wet sticky track, roll-offs are the worst thing ever, because then that would just smear the mud across your visor, and you'll lose your vision, you have to have those clear tear-offs that you can completely pull away.
Yeah, definitely, I know, last year I tried motocross goggles with the roll-offs, and you, you pulled your pin and all the mud stuck in the corner, and you only had about a 10, 10mm gap to look out of, it wasn't, wasn't nice.
Certainly not when you're at speed. So less than a minute to go on that three-minute bell, and it looks like everybody is happy with their setups, their tear-offs are on, and it's just a matter now of waiting for that three-minute bell period to end, so that they can be released. Pit gate once again being locked and loaded, big thanks to Fence Direct. So clerk of the course, Davy Jones, has released them around about 25 seconds early, everybody was ready to go, that makes total sense. And now we will see who will form up on the grid. Waikato Raiders Yellow Team, winning the toss, again, they will start from pole position, the Maulers will go from the outside. And we see the 361 of Clinton Cheatham, who will sit on pole on row number one for the Raiders. Then it will be the 10 of Ethan Dorwood who slots in on the outside for the Maulers, with the 86 of Brad Singer going, well, there you go, there is the fake-out moves. Looks like it will be the 65 of Royden Hind for the Maulers, that'll go from three, with the 13 of Jamie Simons for the Raiders on four. 16 of Marshall for the Raiders on five, with the 78 of Gibson Taut going for six for the Maulers. Then the last row, 75 of O'Reilly for the Maulers slots in, with the 17 of Dave Moore for the Waikato Raiders. The grid is set, sitting up in behind the Mianie Speedway pace chute. Race number two, Waikato Raiders Yellow, Mianie Maulers. So we go green, straight away on the brakes on the outside for the 10 car of Dorwood. And the 13 car not moving either, Simons holds up the 78 of Gibson Taut. Very slow through turn one and two, the race leader gets spun, Cheatham half spins off turn number two, Maulers slip around the outside. Mauler's currently sitting at one and two on the track, it's the 75 of Leroy O'Reilly, remember he's just come from the back row, as Dorwood gets a big serve there from the 17H of Dave Moore. Dorwood having to contend with two of the Raiders' cars, as the 16 of Marshall slips by on the inside, and Royden Hind will give chase, there's a big hit on the back straight. Taut put high up the wall, was able to survive the hit, and then now goes on attack of Jamie Simons in the 13H car. Still, it is the 75 of O'Reilly out in front. Taut's still locked up here with the 13H of Simons. Both cars will release, and looks like Taut's trying to avoid being taken to the grass, and he will have to redress that as the 13 of Simons gets away. Here's your race leader, 75 car of O'Reilly, up into turn one and two. Spread out teams' race at the moment, there's the 10 of Dorwood goes through turns three and four, Taut's back out on the track in the 78. Well, it is Maulers running one and three, with the other three positions being claimed by the Raiders' team at the moment. Remember, you've got to get a race win, you've got to at least get that car across the line in first place. You can see that beautiful sunset there, as the drivers almost go into shadows on the main straight. With another lap about to be completed, we will be half race distance in teams' race number two. 75 O'Reilly, long way in front at the moment, Gibson Taut now is going into block mode with the 16 car of Marshall, trying to slip by on the inside, gets into the side of Taut, Taut takes them both to the grass, and allows the 65 of Royden Hind to slip by. O'Reilly completes another lap in the 75 car, four to go. Clinton Cheatham chasing hard in the 361. Clinton Cheatham chasing hard in the 361. Well, Dorwood tried to put a shot in on the 16, missed his timing there, the 13H of Simons is back into it. So we go down the back straight with the Maulers running one and two. 75 O'Reilly, then it's the 65 of Hind. Hind is half a lap behind the race leader, and again, we have contact up there, turn number one. Dorwood getting pinned by the 16H of James Marshall. Gibson Tout running shotgun for the race leader, O'Reilly, and two laps to go for the 75. Keep an eye on Dorwood, running backwards, trying to hold back the 361 of Cheatham. Dorwood still in the race, all eight cars still in this teams' race, and Hind spins around the 13H car of Simons, that could have been a crucial move right there for the Maulers. Gibson Tout still goes into block mode, holding back the 16H of Marshall. Tout will get spun down here on turn three. Hind is gone by. The 17H car of Dave Moore is chasing him hard, white flag is out with just one to go. Looks like Dorwood, I think, getting pinned up against the wall down the back straight. And here comes O'Reilly, the race leader. Keep an eye on the 361 though, of Clinton Cheatham. Cheatham's going to have a look at the race leader, O'Reilly should be able to slip by. O'Reilly gets by on the concrete, Dorwood puts in the hits as well. Once again, the 13 car gets spun. And Mianee Maulers will take a provisional 1-2. Well, the teams' race is still alive. Tout is back out on the track in the 78 car, he's done a great work as a blocker. Comes in under the flag. Well, that was great work by the Maulers team. O'Reilly got out to an early lead on lap number one, off grid position, I think was number seven. And that could be a provisional 140-55. We'll have a look at the result now. 75B Leroy O'Reilly taking the win for the Maulers, with the 65B of Royden Hind in second place. 17H Dave Moore for the Waikato Raiders, first of their cars. 361H of Clinton Cheatham, and fifth place 16H James Marshall, those are your points scorers, provisional points scorers from teams race number two, but it looks like provisionally a big win for the Maulers. Give them a round of applause, race fans, that was a very strategic race, it was not a fast race, that's not all about that in teams racing.
I don't know if you could see it up there, Mike, but those last couple of laps, Leroy O'Reilly's car was back for, and we could see his spare park leads underneath his car, bouncing on the ground.
Oh, no way, so they rode their luck.
Definitely. This car seemed like it was only on three cylinders going around that track for a couple of laps in the middle here, and we could see his leads bouncing, and we were just yelling it, "Go Leroy, don't stop", and he managed to get through and score that win.
Yeah, and the car has in fact stopped up there at turn number one, and he's going to be on the back of the Alexander Construction tow truck.
Yeah, definitely. As soon as he went through that checkered flag, he just obviously turned that car off, and that's where it finished. And yeah, these boys will be stoked after their Nationals going up there and having a little bit of a disappointing run. I know Travis wanted to focus on this meeting, and they've obviously done that, they've kept under the radar, and now they've come out and won their first race.
All right, Bianca, pit side.
Yeah, guys, I'm down here with Steve Reid. Steve, that was a really good race and a good grab of points for your first outing tonight, or this weekend.
Yeah, no, it was really good. We all stuck together and got the job done, and no, we're really stoked to get, I think we got one, two, three and five, I think, so no, we're real happy, it's what we had to do.
Yeah, I mean, you're a bit of a veteran at this event as well, so it's not your first time. Talk us through the track though, because that looked really tricky for the first event.
Definitely, yeah, it was not too bad on the pole line, but the minute you went off there, it was just real hard to judge, and it was quite sticky and not very nice out there.
Yeah, I can suspect, I would expect that it is going to change dramatically by next time you're on there, but tell us, how does that tactic change from that track to a more of a driving track?
I'm not too sure really, just have to check the tyre pressures and pretty much check the setup and just, yeah, see what the next couple of races are doing and just basically make some changes off that.
Yeah, it's really hard to judge, isn't it, what it's going to do, especially with this kind of heat on the track that's slowly disappearing. But listen, well done, congratulations to you and your team, we'll come back and talk to you maybe in your second race.
Thank you very much.
Cheers, thank you.
All right, here we go, race fans, this is teams race number three, Waikato Raiders Red versus the Bay Park Bulldogs. Let's have a look at the grids. 4H is Josh Humble, 7 of Hamish White, 8 is Larry Henderson, Brad Philpott in the 24 car, with the 32 of Jaden Dredon, and the 97 of Casey Cheatham. And for the Bulldogs, the 26M of Bryce Carter, 27 Matt Coombe, 31 Chloe Ingram, 34 is Kane Hanson, 87 Hadley Dixon, and the 915 of Ash Henstock. Team manager for the Bulldogs tonight, Luke Shires and Daniel Punnett, and I think it was Lance Henderson that is now the team manager for the Waikato Raiders Red team. Bulldogs won the toss, and it is the first team tonight that is elected to actually start from the outside after winning that coin toss, so the Raiders Red will go from pole position on the inside. Track's starting to look really, really nice out there, actually, developing a very nice high line. Not that that matters when it comes to team racing, it's not about lap times whatsoever. Just shows that this track crew have done the right thing. So first of the cars to come down into the three-minute bell area will in fact be the 4H of Humble, the one that I talked about with the straps on the bonnet. Two of the Bulldogs, three of the Bulldogs in fact, will head to the infield. And the 26 car, straight through that water on the bullring circuit there, Bryce Carter, he was loving that, just cooled the car down a little bit. And will be the 31M of Chloe Ingram that will come down into the three-minute bell area. So for the Raiders Red, we've got the 4H, 24H, 97, and the 8. And also the 7 car will park up in here. So the only one that hasn't is the 32 of Jaden Dredon Manning. And the three-minute bell is activated.
So I was just talking to Bay Park Bulldog manager, they've only got four cars out here. They've got one still in the pits, he's got a clutch problem, and Hadley Dixon, apparently he's run into engine trouble, so I don't think we'll be seeing him tonight.
Well, that's going to really change the mindset of that team and how they operate in these races, because they know they can't really afford to lose a car.
No, that's it, you know, these four cars here that are out on the track are going to have to race, try and survive, and not get any big damage, because it could be these four cars that will be back out in the next one.
And that clutch issue, is that something that they can sort for tomorrow? Right, looks like Bianca's downstairs with Wayne Verco.
Yeah, guys, just while we're waiting for that three-minute bell to finish, we're down here with Wayne. Wayne, of course, you were the very unfortunate soul that got tipped over in that first race, so I thought we'd better come down and check up on you, but all smiles, no drama.
Yeah, no, we've got to go for the next one.
Awesome, so no damage at all?
A banana to side rail and cooked the clutch, but we'll get it fixed.
That's probably just teams racing in general, but hey, how cool was that piece of machinery that literally just picked your car up and flipped it back onto its side? That was pretty well done.
Yep, saves a lot of manpower, instead of pushing them over like the old days.
Yeah, absolutely, and a worst-case scenario, they used to just drag them straight from the track into the infield, thank God we don't do that anymore.
Yeah, definitely, there's some money under their bonnet, and we want to get it upright as quick as we can.
Yeah, absolutely, listen, we're about to give up on the three-minute bell, but I'm glad that you're okay.
Yes, no worries.
Cheers, thank you.
So just on halfway through that three-minute bell period. Still just tyre packing a little bit with the Whiff Building Maintenance Vehicle, 007 Paintball on the back, another great sponsor.
Boys are putting the bonnet back on Philpott's car, so it looks like he's ready to go.
Regan, what was the issue there with the tie-down straps on the 4H car of Humble for the bonnet?
I'm not sure I missed that one, Mike, but by the looks of it, the tie-down straps are all good to go. Yep, Josh is going to go out there and smash someone he reckons, their bonnet's tied down tight.
Perfect, we love it. So just on 50 seconds. As we saw in that last three-minute bell for the previous teams' race, if all the drivers were happy to go, they were being released early. Pit gate here is still open. Waikato Raiders Red, starting from pole on the inside, lost the coin toss, so the Bay Park Bulldogs, they go from the outside in grid position number two after winning that toss.
I don't know what would have happened there, Mike, if that Waikato team had any issues, because their manager Larry Henderson was belted up in the car, sitting there, so they obviously had an understanding before the hot laps, if anything went wrong.
Yeah, he's double duties tonight, isn't he, taking over the manager's duty?
Yeah, definitely, hopefully he can tell his cars what to do while he's going around and wave at them.
Do you remember that, I'm not sure, was it a Peter Barry event when I was on the infield as the commentator, and Maulers were out on the track, we had that red light period, and I just casually walked over onto the track, stood on your side rail and did an interview with you, I think we got a bit told off for that.
Yeah, no, it was good, you told me what was going on and who was winning, so that was really helpful.
Well, that's what everybody thought, you know, they were a bit complaining about that.
Yeah, I know, I think you just told me to harden up, actually.
Let's go back to this grid lineup, you can see it's the 7 car right there of Hamish White that's on the inside, right next door to the 31M of Chloe Ingram. 26 will line up on grid position three with Bryce Carter. The 4 car of Humble on the outside on four, grid position five, we're getting ready to rock and roll here, the pace chute's off the track, here we go, Waikato Raiders Red, Bay Park Bulldogs. Straight away, they turn into each other and take into the grass, Hamish White, the 7 car, has to redress, and a whole bunch of them there, synchronized, doing some donuts at the start. Humble's going to go to the back. 31 car in the fence up at turn two, and it's one of the Raiders Red cars, the 24, that leads currently at the moment, Philpott, getting close attention from the 27 of Matt Coombe, they're locked together. Then it's the 26 car for Bryce Carter for the Bulldogs, sitting back there in third. Great work done by the Bulldogs, the 27 of Coombe spinning the race leader. He's got a Raiders car right in front of him though, as he enters the back straight. Got two cars stationary at the top, oh, going to go on the wall hard there for the 26, Bryce Carter. That front bumper catching the fence at that angle, both drivers hitting reverse, back out on the track for the 22. Pick up the race leader, I think it is the 27M of Matt Coombe. Yes, sir, it is, with just eight to go. Bulldogs out in front, frack Bulldogs, running one and four and five. That's all going to change, we know. 34 car backing it down, going to go into block mode, Hanson's going to protect the race leader. Here comes the 24H car of Philpott, Hanson couldn't quite do it, he got punted out to the wall, looks like he's got left rear damage, I think. Remember those outside flat rules do not apply here in teams racing. Humble is trolling the pole line in the 4H car, again, looking for the race leader of Matt Coombe. The Bulldogs driver looks to the outside, Humble gets on the brake. And slipping through, Philpott, new race leader. The Raiders have taken over. The tank down here on turn three, the 31 car. Just sitting down here, lying in wait, Chloe Ingram. Ingram's going to get on the gas, try and force the 24 car to the wall, and does a brilliant job. But there was another Raiders car to take over, Jaden Dredon Manning will go through to the lead, that's the 32 car. 27 Matt Coombe wants that race lead back, vital to get that lead. Humble still running block on the 34 of Kane Hanson. Lots of block work going on in this teams' race. The tank once again backing out of the wall, Ingram finds forward gears, back in the race. 7 of Hamish White sitting down on the pole line, here comes the 26 for the Bulldogs, Bryce Carter gets into the back. The 7 car of White gets on the brake, too much brake as Carter slips by. Two cars in the wall up there at turns one and two as well. Burke hit on the back of Ingram from the 32 car, and 27 spinning out, Matt Coombe. Less than three to go. One pinned up on the wall down there at turn two. Humble it is that's got that car pinned. Can't see the Bulldogs' race number, their other car that's in the wall with them. As we get right to the sharp end, two to go for this teams' race. Here comes the 7 car of Hamish White, puts a bumper into the back of the 26 car, unseats Carter, the greasy racetrack, you can't control it when you get that nudge. And again, Chloe Ingram's doing some great work in the 31 car, white flag is out, and it is Raiders running one and two with the 24H car out in front. Ingram tried to put a hit on the 24, just missed the rear bumper, and he's got away down the back straight, and it's only the 34 car in between, and that car has gone to the grass. Hanson is out, and it will be a win for the 24 of Philpott. Well, it looks like it might be a 1-2 in fact for the Raiders with the 32H of Jaden Dredon Manning finishing up in second place. 27M Matt Coombe third, that's provisionals, wait for the result. Well, that was all about block work. No huge hits in there, we didn't think we would see any from that Bulldogs team either. These guys, girls need to protect those race cars. Here we look at the result, 24H Brad Philpott, provisional win, 32H Jaden Dredon, second, 27M Matt Coombe in third, 26M Bryce Carter in fourth, and the 4H of Josh Humble, who did some great work out there in fifth, with a provisional win for the Waikato Red, 150 to the Bulldogs 45. Give them a round of applause as they come round. I don't know if there's going to be need to do too much track prep after that one, certainly from up here in the com box, the track doesn't look too bad, definitely heavy on the outside. Got the roller down there, just probably going to roll that inside line. With the 34 car, let's hope there's not, that the reason that car stopped can be sorted out, because remember, they are down to four cars, with the engine issues for one and a clutch for the other. And Kane Hanson, he'll be willing to get back in the pits as soon as possible. Race number four coming up next. Race number four coming up next and that'll be the Gisborne Gladiators. They finished second last year, losing finalists and they come up against the Orange Ruffies from Hawkes Bay. Pretty excited about that Orange Ruffies team, looks really good on paper, but that's the thing with teams racing, teams do look good on paper, doesn't mean that it's going to look good on the track. Ruffies have never made, I don't think even made the semi-finals before. Not that I really can remember and if our media correspondent Shane Hundell has to think long and hard about it, could well be right. Well deserved round of applause there for the Waikato Raiders red team. So a little bit of roller work going on on the track at the moment. Remember to go and visit one of the food stalls around the track, go and grab a Speedway hot dog. It's just not Speedway without a hot dog and a bit of train smash.
Hey, I'm actually down here at the Bulldogs camp, I'm trying to find someone that I can speak to. I wanted to speak to Hadley Dixon, but of course they're all hands on deck at the minute with Chloe Ingram, who was playing a very pivotal role in that block position. But Hadley, really, really quickly, I know that you're busy, hey, can you talk us through your two cars and as to why they aren't making an appearance today?
Unfortunately, my car had a parts failure. It's none of the engine builder's fault. It is what it is. I'm gutted, but engine builder's been called and he's helping him out. So the car will be ready in a couple of weeks hopefully, but for now it's just going to be parked up. I'm running out of money.
Hadley, I know how disappointed you are because this is literally a brand new engine that you have waited a few years for.
Yeah, yeah, it's a new engine, but that's the thing, the cylinder head wasn't touched by the engine builder, so it's none of the engine builder's fault. So he just put it together. So yeah, it's just a parts thing. You know, you never know if you're going to have a heart attack, if you're going to die. So you know, you never know. So it's just, it's just life. It's engine, you know. Lucky it didn't happen on the track, else it would have been catastrophic. So it's just got a jam valve, so might have a bit of damage to the piston, but that's all right. We'll pull the engine out over the weekend and assess the damage from there. But our mate over there, he had clutch issues when he got it off the trailer this morning. So we think it was a throw up bearing, got a new throw up bearing and that failed too. So we're ripping parts out of my car to get this car done. Well, your car's a team then, it's team work, eh? So well, he should be out for the next one hopefully. Yeah, so we're a bit gutted, it's a bit of bad luck for the team, but we'll just get things sorted. I'm on the spinners now, so we'll get shit done.
Listen, I mean, I can feel your pain, I'm sure everyone who's listening and watching at home can too. But Hadley, go do your thing, I pulled you away from some really important work. Thank you so much for taking the time to speak to us.
Yeah, thank you and yeah, just good luck to the Raiders for winning that one. You know, it was a good race and caused some havoc because we've got to fix some damage on Chloe's tank now, but that's all good. Teams racing, it's what we love, it's what we do, eh?
It's what we're here for. Thanks, Hadley.
I saw in the background as well, Bianca, that the 31 of Chloe Ingram had a sheepskin there. Did she have that, has that got the hole cut in it when draped over the shoulders or just she paid the back of the seat?
Chloe's right here, let me ask her really quickly. Chloe, Mike would like to know, he seen that you were wearing a sheepskin in that race, is there just a hole cut in it and you put it over your shoulders?
Yes, there is.
Very old school.
Very old school, Mike said, but quite necessary too, obviously.
Yeah, my next gen actually dig into my collarbone.
Okay, so that can be very comfortable, especially when everyone's trying to attack you on the field, oh, sorry, on the track.
Yeah, just an extra protection.
You can ask Chloe, sorry, ask Chloe as well if she's got the cricket pads.
Oh, Mike would like to know if you also wear any extra protection like cricket pads?
I got knee pads and rubber pads on as well.
Oh, there we go. So we're all padded up from heat to toe, literally.
Yes, I am.
Okay, safety first, Chloe, always, always. Well done, you had a very pivotal role, making a lot of blocking in that race.
Yeah, just had to change the plans, depending on what happened off the start, which should go our way, so it was an ours to win.
Yeah, absolutely. It was a bit of a laugh at the start, I was having a giggle because five cars actually ended up on the infield and had to redress. That's over half of the pack, you know, half of the cars, it was hilarious.
Ah, yeah, it is.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Listen, hard luck that you couldn't take away the win, but listen, hopefully that all the cars are strong enough to come back out for your second race.
Ah, yeah, we'll go through and have a look at the cars and hopefully, hopefully the best next race.
Perfect, thanks for your words, Chloe, thanks.
Thank you, Bianca. Just a little bit more tyre packing from this team, these teams in fact, as they get ready for race number four on the programme, the Gisborne Gladiators versus the Orange Ruffies.
Do I have time for another interview? I'm right on the other side, so I have no idea, I can't see the track, but I'd like to go speak to Josh Humble if I have the time, Mike.
You get in there.
Okay, let's see, he's right here, he's a big lad, can't be missed, look at him over here. Josh Humble, Bianca, nice to meet you. Mate, you blocker from hell, you did your job, you did your job very well.
Larry wanted me to come in with a car and two tractors, so I didn't quite get to that point, but I had everything I could, so pretty happy with that race, it was good.
It was a bit more of a technical race than I thought it would be because the track is still reasonably wet out there. One little tap and the cars are just spinning out all over the show, so it's actually quite hard to make any advances.
Yeah, it was quite a difficult track. My car had way too much rear grip, it was struggling with the push, so and yeah, that pole line was still a little bit wet, so we were struggling to get moving down there too. So it was quite fun, there was grip on the straights, you could hold someone up on your back bumper quite nice, it was good. But yeah, it would have been challenging for everyone.
Are there anyone in your team that stood out for you? Of course, I mean, I know you were busy doing the block roll, but by golly, we had Brad Philpott that was just running laps and laps time and time again, he did so well in that race.
How about Rat Bag? Running in a teams' race, who would have thought? That was awesome. I think probably it was just stand out to the whole team really. Can't really pick someone out, I think we did a really good race. I don't even know where we finished up besides the win at least, but yeah, I think stand out for me would definitely be Rat Bag running.
Yeah, Mike, can you confirm, did we finish one, two and three down here or just one and two?
From memory, I think it was one, two and five.
One, two and five.
Oh, that's awesome, that's good points haul for the team.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, especially like you say, on a tricky, tricky track. Listen, no damage or anything like this, we've got a little bit of a hole in the bumper here, but you'll be able to patch that up and get you out in the next race.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Awesome, all righty, cheers. I think our cameraman just got a good shot of that. Thanks for your words, Josh, I know that you guys have to go and have a look. How much more time do I have, Mike? Have we got a bit more? I can do a bit more.
Our team's just about to do some hot laps, maybe a couple of minutes.
Yeah, okay, I'll tell you what, I'll leave you guys up there with the hot laps and we'll come back down and do some more interviews shortly.
Thanks, Bianca.
Perfect, thank you.
Gisborne Gladiators, Orange Ruffies, hot laps. So for the Gladiators, the 5G of Kane McDonald, 13 is Lucas Haye, 96 of Brad McGee, Will Carr in the 164 car, G car, and Willie Stevenson moving over to the Gisborne camp defecting from Hawkes Bay in the 185. And for the Mearney Maulers, sorry, for the Orange Ruffies, it will be the 11B of Jason Stevens, the 23 of Shane Melling, 24 Daniel Melling, 36 is Jordan Awkrim, 57 Daniel Adie and the 79 of Ryan and Emery Ditmar. See who will come and face that three minute bell. Looks like most of the Ruffies team are happy with how their cars were set up. In fact, all five of the Ruffies are going to the infield. Six of the Ruffies drivers coming to face the three minute bell and that will be the 79 of Ryan and Emery Ditmar. Really came to attention in teams racing earlier this year and has really worthwhile gained his spot in this Ruffies team.
He sure has, Mike. He was dropped in the deep end that night and done really well for a guy that's never teams raced, so you know, he's got big things ahead of him coming.
So we see the 13G of Lucas Haye parked up down here, just the two cars here facing that three minute bell and that was activated, so two minutes 45.
So I see 13Gs all got to go and Ryan's car just got a bit hot, so they're just double checking everything on that.
Good to see Gibson out there as well because, you know, he's in the Maulers camp, so effectively opposition, but he's still there giving some advice and help.
Yeah, that's the thing with us Maulers and these Ruffies, they might be oppositions on an ally tonight, but they're one big team.
David Jones will give them the release, so we only use just over a minute of that three minute bell. Fence direct pit gate will be locked and loaded and we'll get ready for race number four on your programme, Gisborne Gladiators, who will start on the inside on pole position after losing the toss. The Orange Ruffies electing to go for the outside, second teams' race in a row, where the team that has won that toss will go from the outside grid position two. You can see on the live stream there just how much moisture is still on that Bullring solo bike track there as well. It shows you how wet this track was in the last couple of days, really did have a lot of rain here in Hawkes Bay. It's going to be stunning weather again tomorrow, I think it's even going to be hotter than it was today and loving that three o'clock start. So as we look to the line up, you can see the 96 of Brad McGee will go from grid position one with the 24 of Daniel Melling on two. Then it looks like the 36 Jordan Awkrim will go from three. Can't quite see that car there on grid position four. That is the 13 car in fact of Lucas Haye. Then the 85, was it the 85, 185 Willie Stevenson, the defector, who will go from that position and alongside him, the 57 of Daniel Adie. Now I better be nice to Willie, he's a good guy. Pace shoot off the track, about to get ready to rock and roll, teams' race number four. Straight away on the brakes there in mid pack. Gladiators will take an early lead, Melling gets taken to the wall by the 13 car of Haye and Melling managing to stay off the wall, he's good on the brakes. But it is the 96 car that's out in front, Brad McGee trying to stretch away. 57 car of Daniel Adie gives chase in second place. Then it's the 185 of Stevenson for the Gladiators. Contact off turn two. Good work done by the 36 of Jordan Awkrim to hold up the Gladiators driver and we see Emery Ditmar taken to the wall here as well in the 79 car by the 13 of Lucas Haye. Haye has pinned him down here at turn four. Again, another slow paced teams' race and here comes a big hit on the 36 car of Awkrim by the 5 of Kane McDonald, biggest hit so far in this teams' race. And McGee is the race leader in the 96 car, sparks flying off turn one. 57 Adie for the Ruffies sits in second place. Ditmar in the 79 now trolling on the 13 car just in front as they come off turn four. Brakes on for the 5 car, Kane McDonald holding up Melling and Awkrim gets spun by the 185 of Stevenson. Stevenson executed a perfect move and he will slip around the outside. Stevenson moves up into the top three, your race leader 57, wow, big hit there on the back straight, the 13 car of Lucas Haye gets spun. The big hit put in by the race leader, the 57 of Daniel Adie for the Ruffies. Oh, McGee goes back into the lead again. Adie back to second place. Stevenson, big hit on the main straight. Another hit on the 79 of Emery Ditmar, parks him up in the wall at turn three, turn two, but Ditmar is back up and running and the 5 car of McDonald gets spun by the 57 of The Ruffies are doing a good job here, but they've got the 96G of Brad McGee out in front. Some panel damage on that car, it's being peeled right back. Here comes Melling in the 24 car for the Ruffies on the nine car. Again, Awkrim gets a big serve from the 185 of Stevenson. Just on three laps to go, actually it might be two this time by as the 96 car is about to cross the stripe. Two to go, Ruffies need to go now if they want to get a big share of the points. Still got that Ruffies car pinned up down here at turn number two, three. Keep an eye on the 13 of Lucas Haye, just sitting down on the pole line, he'll be gunning for the 57 of Adie. Adie turns back down, tries to get into the back quarter of that car, but Haye gets spun and spins Adie at the same time. One lap to go and it is McGee for the Gladiators in front in the 96 car. You can see that panel damage sticking off the side, peeled that aluminium panel right back, but it's not slowing him up, that's for sure. And as he comes off turn number four, the Gladiators are going to take a race win. And looks like the 57 squeezing through on the inside. Well, there's a chequered flag, all drivers have come under and provisionally, it's looking like it was the 96G of McGee. 57B of Adie for the Ruffies. 185G of Stevenson and then the Ruffies drivers filling out four and five with the 24 of Melling and 79 of Ryan and Ditmar. Let's have a look at the screen here with the unofficial result. 96 Brad McGee taking the win for the Gladiators, 57B Daniel Adie in second, 185G in his debut for the Gladiators, Willie Stevenson in third, 24B Daniel Melling in fourth for the Ruffies and another Ruffies driver, 79 Ryan and Emery Ditmar finishing up in the top five with the provisional. Gladiators 125, Ruffies 70. Strategic race there for the Gladiators, they really want to continue on that form from last year and prove that they were worthy of that final slot. But it wasn't a total loss for the Ruffies. If you're going to lose, well, if you get 70 points and then you come back strong in your next one, you're still effectively in with a chance. And the Gladiators, sorry, let's have a look at the Ruffies, they'll come up against the Rotorua Rascals as well, that's a big task, that is the national champions that they come up with in heat number 10 for their second qualifier. Give them a round of applause as they come round, we love our Gisborne Gladiators team. Always been a good affiliation between the Gisborne Club and the Hawkes Bay Club over the years with the track at Awapooni, first opening in 1971 and continues on today with a great atmosphere there at the Eastland Group Motor Speedway. Race five on your programme, we're looking forward to that, it is up next and it will be the New Zealand Stock Car Teams Champions, the Rotorua Rascals come out onto the track for the first time tonight for them and also up against the Palmerston North Pumas.
Willie Stevenson, there's a couple of out of towners in this Gisborne team, but you've all jumped together and managed to take away a really well thought out win.
Yep, yeah, a few of us boys are from out of the region, but we've actually, me and Brad have just brought lifestyle blocks in Gisborne, so we're moving up there. But um, we've actually, me and Brad have just brought Lifestyle Blocks in Gisborne, so we're moving up there.
Oh wow, I don't know if anybody else knew that, I definitely didn't know that. And uh, so that's actually great news. Lifestyle Blocks and stock cars all seem to go hand-in-hand with you drivers.
Yeah, they definitely do, especially up in the G.
Hey, um, really quickly, just one last question, the car's all good, no damage? Everything seems to be calm down here?
Yeah, no, it's all pretty sweet, just got the, uh, underwriter come off, but we'll just cut that off and we'll be good to go.
Wonderful. No news to report, we'll throw it back up to you Mike.
Thank you. Team's race number five, the Rascals versus the Palmerston North Pumas. This is going to be huge. For the Rascals, the 29R Terence Perry Woods, 87 Chris Shingleton. 91 is Tony Coxhead. 96 Courtney Young, 735 of Keegan Orr. And the 3NZ, uh, sorry, move on with the 3NZP of Kyle Rowe for the Pumas. 31 of Jared Davis, 48 of Josh Mulcahy. And the 223 of Ratia Robinson. 667 is Hamish McLeod and the 669 of Brendan Ty. Rotorua Rascals, of course, your current New Zealand Stock Car Teams Champions are coming in here with a big reputation in riding the crest of a wave. And the Palmerston North Pumas, former champions at the Peter Barry, they've won it twice. But that was as far back as 2011 and 2012. So we see two of the Rascals drivers down here into the 3-minute bell area with the 87R car of Chris Shingleton, the 735R of Keegan Orr.
Stu just asked, uh, what's the ruling on Brendan Ty? Obviously he's driven out the gate with a roof number, it's now falling apart. Can we just rip it off? I said, well, he did drive out the gate with one, so technically he started the race with it.
Um, yeah, so why, why are they not working on that though?
Uh, just he's coming in now, so
Yep.
They might get another paper clip and try and hold it back together.
See, he didn't realise that that had happened, I don't think. So he's done another full lap and probably lost, well, he hasn't lost any time, the 3-minute bell has not yet started, so.
Yeah. I know Brendan just, uh, got a new super this year, so he's obviously cutting back on bolts for his wing.
Duck tape.
Yeah.
667 of Hamish McLeod there for the Pumas. 223 car as well of Ratia Robinson.
Uh, it's actually broken the aluminium, uh, the mountain where it's riveted onto the wing, it snapped off.
Okay, so what do you think they can do about that?
Uh, I think they're going to leave it. Uh, they're asking to jack it up, so they obviously want to change some suspension on his car. We've got tow truck coming down to 667, so he's obviously changing it, there's a bit of drive down here. Then you've got Tony Gallagher here, he's just eating his ribs.
Oh, I just, I just spotted that, look how chill he is right now.
Yeah, I, yeah, didn't offer me one.
Sharny's ribs, I hope.
They are, he reckons it's the only reason they come here.
Brilliant.
Keegan Orr, he's probably, yeah, by the look of that, they are just tightening up the wheels. Been inside the car and obviously tightened the belts. We've got the tow truck getting, uh, pushed down, they want to come down to the 669. Ron, Ron Ty's going hard out with his fingers waving around, so.
Yeah, well, they've been probably waiting 30, 40 seconds for someone to jack that car up. And we're just on about 1 minute 45 to go.
Ah, Jason.
So just on 1 minute 30, halfway through the 3-minute bell. So they finally get that 669 car hooked up.
So we've got about 1 minute, 1 minute 20 now left on the clock. 1:22 left on the clock there, Petrel.
So apparently Regan, it's not sun strike that was the issue, there was a glare of some sort.
Yeah, that's, that's if I was outside the track. Yeah, they're taking some turns out of Brendan, so he's obviously, uh, happy with that now, he's giving it a thumbs up. They're not worried about the wing, leaving that on there. The rest of these cars are all good to go. Ron Ty's got all the gear.
50 minutes, 50 seconds.
He's, he's ripped the wingstay off, so that's, uh, there's no danger for that now. And they're just going to leave that on there like a little floppy fin.
So there was, uh, an investigation after that last race as well for the Gisborne Gladiators and the Orange Roughies. And there is a result change, I'll talk about that shortly. As we have less than 30 seconds to go for the 3-minute bell. So the reason for the, uh, investigation there was on, in fact, on the 185G of Willie Stevenson attacking on the pole line. He has been given a DQ. So we're just quickly working out the revised points. Uh, so it's still a win for McGee in the 96G. But then your next three positions were filled by the Roughies drivers. And that would be, uh, again, a score now of 110 to 85. Still in the Gladiators' favour, but the Roughies team gaining another 15 possibly valuable points. So we look to the grid line up for team's race number, number, uh, five. And it is the 87 that's on pole position, Chris Shingleton for the Rascals. They won the toss and have elected to start on the inside. Then it's the 31P of Jared Davis on two. The 3NZ car of Kyle Rowe for the Pumas goes from three. 91 Tony Coxhead will go from four. Grid position five for the 96 of Courtney Young for the Rascals. Looks like the 669 sliding up there in grid position six. This is a big team's race, this one, both these teams, a lot of history. And the Rascals with a reputation. Straight on the brakes on the front row from the inside. And already, one of the Rascals and Pumas cars spinning into turn one. Pumas get away, the 667 of Hamish McLeod. Oh, 669 taken into the wall hard, Brendan Ty backs it in. And it's Keegan Orr that's putting in those hits, tries to push him up the wall. And Ty will take him to the grass and Orr will have to redress. Here comes your race leader, 667. Contact on the back straight, gets pinned up against the wall. Pumas have another car to slot by. 31 Jared Davis for the Pumas, race leader. He's got to get by the 37, 735 of Keegan Orr who gets on the brake. And that allows the 87R car of Chris Shingleton to get by. Rascals back in the lead. Well, that race lead changed hands about three or four times in one lap. And now it's 3NZ Kyle Rowe who has to chase Shingleton out in front. And he's got the 31P car of Jared Davis in behind him. 36 car pinning someone up against the wall there. And again, another Rascals car getting taken to the grass by the Pumas team. That was the race leader getting pinned. Shingleton back into this race, just heading out through turn number four. Race leader now is 3NZ of Kyle Rowe for the Pumas. They're running one and two with the 31 of Jared Davis in behind. 669 Brendan Ty now goes to work on the Rascals. Allows the race leader to slip by, fantastic teamwork there. And again, the 31 car dealing to the Rascals driver up at turn two. Well, the Pumas are going to work here in this team's race. And again, Kyle Rowe just slips by on the outside because the Pumas are running brilliant block. 669 Ty spins the 91 car of Tony Coxhead. Coxhead trying to find, uh, Ty trying to find the gears down here on the pole line to get back into this team's race. As Kyle Rowe now has to contend with the 96 and does so brilliantly, he slips back around the outside once again. Three laps to go. Pumas are in control at the moment. Keep an eye on the 91 car. Tony Coxhead currently in fourth position. Needs to slow down just a little bit to try and stop the run of the 3NZ car. And that would allow the 735R of Keegan Orr to catch up, who's going as hard as he can. Now Orr has backed it down, he's going to go into block mode up at turn two. Oh, Pumas are going to work brilliantly. The Rascals could suffer possibly only their second defeat of the season. The 96 has got a cut left rear. He can still continue. Checkered flag is about to come out next time by with one lap to go and it's still a Palmerston North car in front. Huge hit there on Keegan Orr from the 667 of Hamish McLeod. Kyle Rowe has won it for the Pumas. It's all about those minor points. Shingleton crosses the stripe in the 87R car for second. 31P Jared Davis provisionally there in third. And the 91R of Tony Coxhead finishing up in fourth. See who will get those last few points as this team's race is still very much alive with the 667 of Hamish McLeod. Well, that was interesting there with the 87 car just going to the grass, but it did that so at pretty much the same time. Let's have a look, 3NZP Kyle Rowe taking the race win provisionally for the Pumas with the 87R car of Chris Shingleton second. 31P Jared Davis third. 91R Tony Coxhead fourth and 667P Hamish McLeod in fifth. That is a provisional result for the Pumas, 135 points to the Rascals, 60. Well, could you call that an upset? No, I wouldn't because we know the Pumas can be dangerous. I'll give them a round of applause as they come round. It was a clinical team's race from the Pumas, from the word go. And the Rascals will have to regroup and we will see them, we will see them out again in event number 10 when they will in fact come up against the Roughies. Uh, yeah, it'll keep Stuart Russell pretty happy. Um, apparently he was running, I didn't know he could do that. As we have a look at our next team's race, it'll be team's race number six. And that is the first time we see the defending champions who will come out on track. That's the Wellington Young Guns up against the Stratford Stormers. The Stormers raced earlier on in the first race of the night against the Palmerston North Colts. And another aspect of this team's race will be the re-shield has been put up by the Wellington Young Guns. And should they hold on to the shield after that team's race? They will then put it up once again in the last team's race of the night against the Palmerston North Pumas. Well, here we go, race fans, straight back into it. And team's race number six, the Wellington Young Guns will come up against the Stratford Stormers. The Stormers have already taken a stunning 175 points from their first team's race. That was in event number one. They'll be riding high and looking to continue that form. And the Young Guns coming here with the reputation as defending champions and laying the re-shield on the line. Should the Stormers win this, then they will be the re-shield holders. We don't know if they will put it up, well, they can't put it up again today because they will have completed their two team's races. But we do know that if the Young Guns win, they will put it up again in team's race number 11 against the Pumas. So just hot laps for the Young Guns this time round because the Stratford Stormers have already had theirs. And then after that, there will not be any more hot laps tonight. Let's have a look at the driver line up. 5W Keegan Levine. 7W is Harrison Hocking. 21W Tim Parker. 46W Ethan Levine. 47W of Anthony Hocking. And the 269W of Jaden Ty. For the Stormers, 32S of Todd Duffy. 33 is Tyler Walker. 55 Caleb Coxhead. 84 Hayden Barker. 742 of Stephen Reed and the 992 Taylor Lamp. Really impressed with how this track is holding up here tonight. You just truly would not believe how much moisture is under that top surface of this track. And they'll do some more work on it throughout tomorrow as well and get it in race trim. Because we have the Hawkes Bay Mini-Stock Championship tomorrow as well. I love watching the mini-stock kids out there. They are the stars of the future of the sport. And we'll get to see them battle for their regional title. And I tell you, it's always very hotly contested and it'll be a 30-car field. Make sure you tell all your friends about the racing tomorrow, starting at 3 o'clock, public gates open at 2. Tell everybody, looks like Bianca's pit side.
Yeah, I'm down here, I'm actually, uh, going to be treated to watching a race. But Caleb Coxhead of Court, you're not in the car, tell us what's happening.
Uh, so in Rotorua I had a bit of an accident and I ended up, uh, fracturing my upper back. So just play it safe this year and sit out for the rest of the season and get back into it next year.
Yeah, absolutely, I was, uh, watching that, those, those races in Rotorua, they were absolutely brutal. I'm not surprised that you are, that you came off engine.
Oh yeah, um, the car took a hiding, I took a hiding, but it's team racing, we love it, so hopefully be back out there next year.
So who is in your car tonight?
Uh, we've got Paul Johnson, he's normally raced the Superstocks 54S, so he's confident in the car, so see what, see what he can do.
Yeah, absolutely, you're nervous watching your car go round and round?
Nah, it's good, I'd rather than sitting in the shed, I'd rather watch it go round.
Yeah, perfect. Boy, these cars are, these cars are, uh, interrupting a really good interview. Sorry Caleb, but hey, um, I'll let you get back to it, let's go, the Stormers.
Yeah, let's go.
7W Harrison Hocking. Uh, was down there in the 3-minute bell area, it looks like he's just going to carry on. And here comes the five of Keegan Levine. Also coming in will be the 21W Tim Parker. 47W Anthony Hocking. 46 of Ethan Levine. 7W Harrison Hocking coming back down into the 3-minute bell area. In fact, it looks like every one of the Young Guns drivers will come down into that area. 269 there as well, Jaden Ty. With all of the Stratford Stormers drivers parked up in the sanctuary area, ready to go into battle. 3-minute bell has been activated.
I tell you what Mike, I've seen a few of those countdown shopping baskets carried out tonight with tools, haven't they? Might have to go get me one of those.
Hey, whatever works mate. Now, look Regan, you've come into this event as a defending team's champion, what's it like for these guys?
Uh, I sort of didn't really let much pressure on you, you know, you just go out there and just do your normal job. And if you can do your normal job, then you'll be the champion again tomorrow night.
Yeah, I suppose so, and you've really got to start off with a good one, don't you?
Yeah, you do, yep. And if these guys have a good team's race, uh, as we've seen Stratford did a, did a superb job in the first race, um, then, uh, it's a good lead for tomorrow night.
You, you would have to say that if the Stormers can get a car home first, that would pretty much put them in that semi-final.
Yeah, you would think so, yep. Look at this big owl down here on a grinder. Obviously Keegan can't see out the back window enough, so, uh, out with a one-mill blade and, uh, cut that window bigger.
He's very hands-on, is Big Owl.
Oh, Big Owl, what, I don't, I don't, there were no words. But listen, I'm down here with Brendan Ty nervously waiting for, sorry Brendan, I mean stand on your foot. Nervously waiting for Jaden to, uh, take part in this race.
Nah, not nervously, he's bloody got a good smart mind and a good team out there as well. So yeah, it'll be, um, good fun, good learning for him.
Hey, uh, he came in for a 3-minute bell, but what was the problem?
He wanted a tweak on his top belt, so they weren't tied enough, that was it, no tweaks on the car.
He knows that he's going to get one up the, uh, up the, uh, he's going to get rogered, right?
Yeah, hopefully. Oh, I mean, oh, I'm not allowed to say that.
No, absolutely you can, but listen, uh, go and watch, go and take your, uh, rightful place up as proud daddy-o to go and, go and cheer your boy on.
Yeah, awesome, thank you very much.
Cheers, thanks Brendan.
Uh, almost two minutes gone for that 3-minute bell. And still just a little bit of work going on there with the 46W of Ethan Levine.
Yeah, I think Ethan might be surprised how drivy this track still is. He reckons it's going to ratty and bumpy and, uh, everything when we were talking to him earlier on. But, uh, this track's still drivy, sticky as and, uh, and still quite amazingly flat, really.
Yeah, look, they're just, they're doing a good job. They've got the, the way they're doing the track, they've got that right. Bringing that roller out every time.
Yeah, I've seen the roller come out on the track just before this race and where it drove out on the track with the tyre marks, it was shiny. So there's still heaps of moisture in this track.
Okay, with less than 30 seconds to go, the release of that three-minute bell area. And we will see who will line up for teams' race one for this defending Young Guns team and putting up that re-shield. For the Stormers, the first car out on the track, 33S of Tyler Walker.
Hey Mike, just quickly, I was just speaking to Alan Levine there and I think that's a bit of a setup. He went out on there with his safety glasses even to cut that back off the, off the car. He reckons that the boys just wanted a kiss and a cuddle from his, from their dad.
Oh rightly so. He'd still been concerned for his boys being out there in teams' racing action. So let's have a look. I think it was the 5W on grid number two, Keegan Levine. Then it will be the 21W of Tim Parker on three with the 992 Taylor Lamp going from grid position four. The 32 of Todd Duffy on five. Looks like the 46 of Ethan Levine will go from six. The seven of Harrison Hocking from seven. And it will be the 84, I think, of Hayden Barker on eight. This is a big teams' race, a high-scoring team and the defending champions. No one really on the brakes that time except for the seven car of Harrison Hocking, who was on the last row anyway. Already got one Stormers car into the wall. And it will be a Stormers car leading the 84 of Hayden Barker. Barker getting attention from the bumper of the 5W of Keegan Levine. But Barker did a good job to hold up Levine as one of the Stormers drivers snuck through. Oh Levine in the 46 car missed the shot on the 33 and Harrison Hocking has just come hocking in there hard. Levine is back out in the 46. Well, the 33 of Tyler Walker got put in very hard. 21 car Parker turned around. Let's see who the race leader is as they cross the line with seven to go. It is the 992 of Taylor Lamp still in front. We've got a car over on the main straight and a wheel off. It's the five car of Levine, Keegan Levine tipped over. Oh, the safety crew have parked right in front. I can't even see which other car was involved. Looks like 33 car, is it 33 that's there?
32 Duffy.
32?
Yep. Good shot on Keegan there. I'd say Ethan's still the favourite son this week.
We see the seven car of Harrison Hocking still where he was when he buried himself into the side of the 33 car. So looking at the screen, 992 Taylor Lamp. Then it's the 84 of Hayden Barker. 21, Tim Parker. That's Barker there in the 84 car, just sitting there, out there on his own.
Hey guys, I've got, I've got the least favourite son. He's out of the car. He called himself an amateur. I'll just wait for him to get his helmet off and I'll see if I can get a quick word. And I'll see the 7W's been pulled off, so I'd say for the hit on 33, I'd say.
Yeah, that's because he was a stationary car. I'm not really sure why, what the exact ruling there is.
You'll probably find there was a car in front of him, so he was actually not in an attacking position.
Yeah, 100%.
Right, Keegan. So I guess your brother's still going to be the favourite son this week?
Yeah, that was, that was pretty dumb. That's my first ever rollover in a teams' race.
Oh well, what a place to do it, eh? The Peter Barry. So all this car will be good to go for the next race, hopefully. Oh no, your front wheel's missing. Bit of damage.
Oh yeah, we'll sort it out.
That's all right, right. Go Ethan. Owl will be cheering for him there.
Another great job done there by that porter vehicle. As we have a look at a replay. Can see there, just turned right straight away into, oh, ripped the front wheel off as he launched up the wall. That was a beautiful hit. Just looking at another angle of it as well. Wow. Keegan thought he was going to slip by on the outside, but no such chance. That was a perfect execution of a hit. And then the 32 car of Todd Duffy timed that one. Can see there in that angle, that was a hard hit indeed. When you can rip the front wheel off just like that, you know that it's gone in hard. Again, we see it there. Wow.
Yeah, he's got no, no brake disc, no stub, it's snapped the whole thing clean off. There's a good shot right in that, in that wheel, obviously.
I've just got to say a big thanks to James Buckrell, BJ's Bakery. You know, Hawkes Bay's just had that meatball festival. We just rocked on up here with some very tasty buns and some meatballs that he's just given the crew up here. BJ's Bakery, number one. Well, we've been watching all night long, Regan, cars getting by on the outside and getting away with it. That's the first time tonight that someone trying to slip by on that high line just got nailed.
Yeah, no, he definitely got, got stopped then. I'm just trying to pick up part of his brake disc and his brake pads. He's pretty warm, that's for sure.
So now the Young Guns, in fact, losing two cars in quick succession with Hocking being taken off the track for hitting another car that wasn't in an attacking position. And Keegan Levine. And there's going to be a lot of work to be done to that five car as we go back racing again. 992 is your race leader, just coming past the commentary position now onto turn number four. Barker doing good work. Pinning back the 21 car. Also Ethan Levine doing the same here on the back straight. The 32 car, Todd Duffy back out on the racetrack and can run shotgun for the 992 of Taylor Lamp. Oh Stratford, the Stormers running one, two and three. The Young Guns are in trouble. And Levine pinning the 84 car into the wall. And there's only two other cars circulating on the track. Now there's another one down there. That's the 21 of Parker who's back up and running. Four laps to go. Parker gets the big serve. Fantastic block work by the 32 of Todd Duffy. Well, he's been a little bit of a standout star in this teams' race and the 992 of Taylor Lamp continuing on. But they've got to get cars across the line. They need those points. They got 175 in the first one, but the more cars, obviously, the better. Lamp goes about his business untroubled in the 992. He's got the 84, one of the best block men Hayden Barker just in front of him. 46 of Ethan Levine is still there. Levine in fact though is down in fourth position, four laps behind the leader. Really has been precision work by this Stratford Stormers team. And they could be the new holders of the re-shield. One lap to go, white flag is out. Duffy pinning the Young Guns car off the turn two. And as they come down the back straight in tandem. 992 Taylor Lamp already getting the applause from the spectators and the supporters down here on the turn pits three and four. Wow. A huge, is it an upset? I said that before tonight. Both those teams deserve to win that teams' race. But the Stormers have gone about it in a better position with provisionally first and second. Lamp finishing three laps ahead of his teammate, 84 Barker. Well, not only give the Stormers a round of applause for winning that teams' race, but also being the new re-shield holders. Let's have a look at the result. 992S of Taylor Lamp taking the win with the 84S of Hayden Barker in second place. 46W Ethan Levine finishes third. 32S Todd Duffy in fourth and 21W Tim Parker in fifth. It's a provisional result and we'll just have a look at the point spread. And it'll be the Stormers, 160 to Young Guns, 35. Well, Stormers definitely looking good for that semi-final spot. Three times in the final here at the Peter Barry, they've never won it. Is this their year? We have a look to race number seven on the program. That'll be the Palmerston North Colts who will come up against Waikato Raiders Yellow.
Everyone has accidents, but thankfully there is always someone there that can help fix your problem. Fraser and the team from Elite Wheels in Christchurch can put your wheels back to the way they should be with state-of-the-art equipment and operators that will have you back motoring in no time. Custom fabrications is their specialty, from wheel manufacturing and whitening to suspension manufacturing and modification. Elite Wheels have you sorted. Elite Wheels is also the preferred repairer for all major insurance companies. Drop down and see the team at Elite Wheels, 240 Anx Road, Christchurch.
Technical welding services Hamilton are specialists in the transit concrete mixer industry. From chassis drop-off to a full working concrete mixing, the team will take care of the job from start to finish. Full engineering services and general sheet metal work can also be undertaken. Need a quote? Call 07 847 2031. Or visit our website, www.techweld.nz. Technical welding services Hamilton, we are the experts.
Here we go, teams' race number seven, the Palmerston North Colts versus the Waikato Raiders Yellow. Both of these teams on the losing side. Let's have a look at the lineup. 11P is Brendan Rees. 16 is Wayne Verco. 23 Ricky Lee Cody. 39 Graham Munn. 63 of Zeon McNab and the 77 Curtis Tenetti. 13H for the Raiders is Jamie Simons. 16 is James Marshall. 17 of Dave Moore. 99 William White and the 361 Clinton Cheatham. As we have a look to their results from round number one, the Palmerston North Colts only picking up 20 points. And the Waikato Raiders Yellow, 55. This really is a race for pride and wanting to make that top eight to at least be able to race off for fifth through to eighth position tomorrow and stay out of consolation racing. Still very much an outside chance maybe if a team could take the full stack of points. But I doubt that it would be enough for the Colts anyway. We see already that the Stormers have set the benchmark at 335. It's possibly, we're not going to see either the New Zealand champions, the Rascals, or the defending champions, Young Guns, in those semi-finals tomorrow. With the Rascals only scoring 60 and of course the Young Guns just picking up 35 in that previous teams' race.
Hey Mike, have I got a quick, a minute or a couple of minutes for a quick word or have we got, have we got cars on the track?
Certainly.
Okay, so I'm actually down here in the Stormers, Stormers camp. Congratulations firstly for the Stormers. We don't normally see Tyler Walker animated in the car, but after taking that park shop, he was definitely giving the thumbs to somebody anyway. But listen, we're down here, we came to check on Tyler, he's okay. Can you talk us through the car? The car's sitting all right?
Uh, no, we've got a damaged gearbox in there, so the boys are just going to change that out. One less job for tomorrow.
Yeah, firstly, I wanted to congratulate the Stormers on taking two wins tonight. That's great. And kill two birds with one stone. You're now the holder of the re-shield.
Yeah, that's good, eh? Good team effort, mate. The team drove really well, did what they were told and held it together, mate.
Yeah, and I see them go over and shake Wellington's hands. Very good teamwork, sportsmanship as well, so congratulations. But main thing is Tyler's standing over here, he's all good.
Yeah, nah, Tyler's all good, mate. Bit gutted about the gearbox, but we'll get that changed out. We'll put our spare one in and we'll be racing again tomorrow.
There you go, guys. We'll shoot straight back up to you, Mike.
Thanks Bianca. I wonder if we'll see the re-shield get put up again tomorrow. So let's have a look at the grid lineup. We see the 99 coming to the line on grid position one for the Waikato Raiders Yellow team. That's William White. Then it's the 63 of Zeon McNab for the Colts who'll go from position two. 17. 20, no, sorry, it's Ricky Lee Cody that will go from three in the 23. Pace shoot off the racetrack. Let's get ready to rock and roll. This is race seven, Palmerston North Colts, Waikato Raiders Yellow. Already on the brakes on the outside row. It's the 99 Raiders driver, William White that leads down the back straight. Chased by Ricky Lee Cody. She would love a race win here on her debut night. Look how much grip these cars are getting. Plenty of bite out there on that track. Cody attacking the race leader. She's going to get a big punt from behind by the 17 car of Dave Moore. Cody withstands it. Drives back round on the inside, then attacks once again. Great work. Big hit, two hits in one. Cody's going to get taken into the wall hard at turn number four by the 17. Dave Moore got away with that and he will stretch away to take the race lead. Followed now I think by the 77 of Curtis Tenetti who come up from sixth position and got by four cars in that just a quarter of a lap. Two cars locked together, head to the infield, one from each team. Not sure who they are. Can't see from this angle. 13 car, Simons puts the big hit into the 39 of Graham Munn. There's your race leader. 17H, Dave Moore. Remember, this is really just a race for those fifth to eighth positions. You don't want to go to consolation racing tomorrow. Ricky Lee parked up on the pole line off turn four. Looks like the race might be done for the 23. Still managing to try and drive into the infield, gain some Still managing to try and drive into the infield, gain some sanctuary there. The 77 car being turned around, Curtis Tenetti. Facing against the flow of traffic right now, put a smoke on the back straight there and again another big hit. Well, Munn is definitely getting some attention as they both try to redress that situation. And the 361 car of Clinton Cheatham continuing on. At the moment it is the Raiders team running one and two. That's the race leader, the 17. Munn is back out on the track in the 39. Just lying in wait, looking for one of the Raiders cars. Here comes the 361 of Clinton Cheatham, he hits into the back of Munn, manages to spin the tank out. Cheatham gets by with the sparks flying on the main straight. Three laps to go next time by. Just the five cars remaining on track. Bit of dirt being thrown up from the side of Cheatham's car. The 17. Dave Moore will have two to go this time. Lots of steam and smoke billowing out of the side of that Raiders car parked up at turn two. That's the 13 car of Jamie Simons putting some big hits, not surprised about that. White flag about to come out. One to go for Moore in the 17, the Raiders looking for a race win at least. The hit on the 77 car of Curtis Tenetti, it was enough to take him to the infield. Took Moore out of the danger zone with that hit and the chequered flag will come out. 17 H Dave Moore for the provisional win. 361, it's gonna be a Raiders one-two, Clinton Cheatham across the line. Already getting the applause as the caution lights come on. Just the five finishes. And we see 17 H Dave Moore for the win, 361 H Clinton Cheatham second. 77 P Curtis Tenetti third. 13 H Jamie Simons in fourth and 39 P Graham Munn despite all that attention and hits finishing in fifth. We'll get a provisional point score result for you. So it looks like provisionally Waikato Raiders Yellow 160 to the Colts 25. So that should keep the Raiders Yellow team in with a chance of at least being in that top eight. Give them a round of applause as they come around, deserve a chequered flag. We look to event eight on the program up next. It will be the Mighty Maulers back out on the track. This is gonna be a big one race fans, the Maulers picking up 140 in that last teams race. And they will come up against the Waikato Raiders Red team who are also on 150. Semi-final from one of those two teams I think, can't wait. Here we go, teams race number eight, the Mighty Mianee Maulers. Who scored 140 points in their first teams race earlier tonight will come up against the Waikato Raiders team who had a big 150. Well, another solid scoring result for either of these teams could put them through to those semifinals and be in the top four. 10 B is Ethan Dawid, 27 Isaac Fothergill, 65 Royden Hind, 75 Leroy O'Reilly with the 78 of Gibson Tout. 4 H is Josh Humble, 7 is Hamish White, 8 of Larry Henderson, 24 Brad Philpott, 32 Jaden Dreaden Manning and 97 of Casey Cheatham. Well, this is a big teams race because both of these teams know that they are in with a chance of those semifinals. First of the drivers down into the three-minute bell area will be the 7 H of Hamish White. Alongside him, the 8 car of Larry Henderson. Also the team manager tonight. Still trying to pick up the front of the 23 car of Ricky Lee Cody. Three-minute bell being activated. Just the two Waikato Raiders red cars here.
Ricky Lee obviously been a star in that race here, but the smile on her face was worth a million dollars, she's loving it.
And she was really getting into that.
Yep, she said to me, she goes, "I should have broke earlier." I said, "That's alright, you'll learn, you'll learn." But she's first time, but she's really enjoying it, that's for sure.
This is a big race for both of these teams Regan with Maulers 140, Raiders 150.
Yeah, well let's hopefully Maulers can gel together like they did in that last one and come through with the win.
I'm just trying to think when the last time they made the semis was. We know the last time they won it was 21. Then it wasn't held of course in 22 because of Cyclone Gabriel, I think it was 22.
Yeah, I think that might have been the last time they were in the finals Mike. They had a couple of years here where they were having a bad run. But maybe things are gonna change tonight.
Yep, fingers crossed. They're coming up against strong Waikato Raiders Red team. I'll give you a 50/50 raffle result later, once it's all quiet. See if you've won that $838, be a nice amount of money to take home tonight. So already coming to the grid with the 7 car for the Raiders. Hamish White starting on the inside, then it's Dawid and the 10 car for the Maulers. 65 Royden Hind for the Maulers will go from three. 97 Casey Cheatham goes from four. And it looks like 32 Jaden Dreaden Manning will go from five. Just missed out who slotted up there into six for the Maulers. Singer slots in there for the Maulers on grid position seven. And the 24 of Philpott, grid position eight for the Waikato Raiders. The grid is set. Teams race number eight. Raiders won the toss for this one, elected to go from the inside. The release of the pace shoot. It's go, teams racing, again that outside road, Dawid hard on the brake. As the Maulers go in attack of the 7 of Hamish White and spin them out. Wow, it's traffic jam city up there at turn one. They eventually sort themselves out with one of the Raiders cars facing the wrong way. And now Maulers driver out in front comes under attack from three Raiders. Going through is the 32 car Dreaden Manning. Oh, big hit down there from the 10 of Dawid on the 97 of Casey Cheatham. And the Maulers need to go, they've gotta catch the top two Raiders cars out in front, the 32 and the 24 of Philpott. Dawid is back out on the track. The 7 car of Hamish White, oh, we're gonna go red. We haven't had too many reds tonight, it's fair to say. We go red though, is there debris on the racetrack? Let's see where the pace shoot is heading. Yeah, right up against the fence there on turn four, that was really good spotting. Is that a visor? Not quite sure what that was. Let's have a look. Dawid putting in a big hit on Cheatham. He's getting a reputation for those hits Dawid. We've got some great drivers coming through here in Hawkes Bay. Cheatham survived it though. Again, you see it from the rear, just see how hard they go in. So moving two of the Raiders cars back, also moving back the 65 of Royden Hind. And the 86 of Singer. There's two races in one at the moment, got four cars this end, four cars top end. 32 H Jaden Dreaden Manning, your race leader, 24 H Brad Philpott. Then it's the 86 of Singer, 65 Royden Hind. So there essentially is your top four right there. Although it looks like the race lead has changed over between the two Raiders cars. Would a race win be enough? Just three more teams races after this. So again, once again, put the green. And another lap down on the board, we're only two laps into this teams race. One of the Raiders cars got spun. Oh, huge hit on the back straight. Wow, that's an exposed cage situation there for the 24 car. Philpott is gonna be gone from this. And the work was done by the 27 of Isaac Fothergill. You see the driver there doing, I think the thumbs down. Well, there's no other option, is there? And once they allow Fothergill to release from that, we may just see that 24 car of Philpott roll over. Trying to have a look to see, I think now it's the Maulers that are running one and two here. No, it can't be because that's Singer, well maybe, yes it could be Singer here just in front of the pit gate and then Royden Hind behind. Give them a round of applause, race fans. They lay everything on the line for our entertainment, great to see the crowd so animated. Great to see a bit of fan interaction there with the driver as well, that's fantastic. That's the sort of thing that keeps youngsters enthralled with the sport of speedway. So they're gonna give the 27 a little bit of time to try and move away from that situation. I'm not sure if he's stuck on any metalwork in that car. Yes, he is. Fothergill has managed to release, but does he have steering? Oh, look at that wheel, that doesn't look good. So you see that right front? Shouldn't have that much turn in. Just having a look at a replay now, you can see Philpott tried to go around the outside, not a good move. And then Fothergill was able to just nail him. You see Philpott here makes that decision just to go around the outside. Fothergill was ready for it, just turns right, job done, game over.
Yeah Mike, I've got Brad Philpott down here. "Hey Philly, what happened mate?"
"Oh, it was a cabbage."
"Oh, you might have to go back to feeding that possum at home mate and stay there eh?"
"Oh yes, VDP, yeah, he didn't do the setup this weekend, so that's what's cost me." "But hey, I was an idiot, I went around the outside and paid the consequences, so all good on him." "I think it's his debut, is it?"
"For the Maulers it is, he's did the roughies last year and been dragged into the Maulers for this weekend."
"Yeah, he's on, keep that boy on."
"We will."
Hey Regan, tell Phil that Brad, sorry, that we really appreciate that fan interaction too.
"They really enjoyed the..." What was that again Mike?
"The fan interaction."
"The fan interaction."
"Oh yeah, gotta love the fans eh, the young fellows, up and comers, so you gotta keep them entertained 'cause at the end of the day, they're gonna be the next ones putting me up the wall."
"Yeah, you were still racing then, no young kids man."
"Hey bro, I'll be your age soon."
"Nah, that's all mate, hey, unless you had a shot, went around the outside, unfortunately it paid off and I reckon it was an awesome hit 'cause it was a Mauler that did it." Cheers Mike.
"Thanks Regan, I'll second that as well." Great having that, what is that machine anyway? I don't even know what you would call one of those. But it's doing some great work here tonight, making the job a lot easier.
"Called a JCB or a telehandler, so yeah, awesome machine, helps us get him off the wall way quicker than just waiting on a tow truck."
"Yeah, absolutely." So it won't be too far away from going back to green. Remember, no movement until that green light comes back on, that's what they got told early on tonight at the drivers briefing.
"Hey Mike, just had a quick message, hey you guys in turn two, do you wanna step back from the fence a bit please? We don't want any cars coming up through there, so turn two by the old, by the lift over there, please hop back from the fence."
"Yeah, it's just a no-brainer, isn't it? And 'cause dirt can fly up as well, you've just gotta make yourself safe. Security will come around and tell you to move back anyway." Here we go, getting ready to go racing once again. We'll pick up the race leader for you this time. And it is the 86 of Brad Singer, 65 Royden Hind running shotgun in second spot. As the Maulers go about their business. The 32 car of Dreaden Manning getting held up by the 10 of Ethan Dawid. And Dawid will try and do his job as the race leaders come through and he'll protect his teammates. But Dreaden Manning goes to the wall, the sparks will fly. And both the Maulers drivers get by, but now they have to contend with the 7 of Hamish White. And Hind gets into the side, redresses the situation. And they are a lap ahead of the 97 of Katie Cheatham. Cheatham is parked up here with the 27 of Fothergill. And it looks like Cheatham put a hit in on the 27 car on that previous lap. And 86 Singer still out in front, Royden Hind still running in second place. We're halfway through this teams race, still a lot of racing to go, anything can happen. Fothergill's trying to get back off the fence. Cheatham's back in the race and the 97 always a danger, the 97 H. Still the 10 car of Dawid on the brakes. Dawid's doing a fantastic job as a blocker in this race. Bradley Singer gets by, he'll have three to go. Bradley Singer gets by, he'll have three to go. Dorwood has got two, almost three at one time of the Raiders cars, trying to force them out of the way. Finally spins them around and so too getting locked up there was the seven car of White and the 97 of Casey Cheatham. Dorwood's still in the race. Singer, three laps to go. Well, it'll be two this time now. And still the wounded Fothergill out on the track, doing whatever he can for the Maulers. Gets a big serve up from the 97 of Cheatham, not the first time. White flag. About to come out for Singer. That's if he can get by the seven car here of Hamish White. Singer does a half spin. Back out onto the track here for Singer. Dorwood's in front of him, able to run shotgun, try and block any moves by those Raiders teams. Royden Hind in second place. Dorwood does another fantastic job and Singer has got by. Is this a semi-final spot beckoning for the Mearney Maulers? The checkered flag, Bradley Singer, you can see it, the elation in the cockpit as he crosses the line. Royden Hind's going to run in second place. It's at least 1:40. Third place will probably be the 32 of Jaden Dread and Manning. Only three cars across the line so far. This looks like the fourth one could be the seven car of Hamish White. Interesting that Dorwood didn't finish, I don't think Dorwood came in under the checkered flag. I think he stopped before he got to the checkered flag. I could be wrong about that, but if he did, there's some points there that he lost. But it's also still showing him here in that fourth spot. Let's have a look. 86 Brad Singer taking the win for the Maulers, 65 Royden Hind in second place for Maulers, 32H Jaden Dread and Manning in third place for the Raiders. 10B Ethan Dorwood, fourth on the screen here for the Maulers, and fifth place, the 7H of Hamish White. With a provisional result for the Maulers, 160 to 35. That would give the Maulers so far a provisional, 300 points. And then of course Raiders red, getting the 65 points, that would put them on 215, which is the same as what we just saw the Raiders yellow. 35, sorry, 35 for Raiders red, only giving them 185. I think that battle for those third and fourth positions in the semis is going to end up quite tight. Great job done by the Mearney Maulers.
Are you building a new commercial business or home, or is it time that your existing premises had to repaint anywhere in the South Island, then Anderton Decorators have you covered? From floor to ceiling, wood to roof, Anderton Decorators offer the latest techniques, equipment and technology to make even the hardest tasks seem simple. Anderton Decorators also has the expert team to take the frustration out of your next project. Call Shane today on 027 Paintin', that's 027 724 6846. Anderton Decorators, we have you covered.
Hey, I'm Sean.
Hey, I'm Gus.
And we are Sign Solutions.
Situated at 61 Preston Street in Vicarage, we can meet all your signage needs.
All right, here we go, teams race number nine. The Bay Park Bulldogs just scored 45 points in their first hitout. And they came up against, will come up against the Gisborne Gladiators this time, who scored 110. Gladiators will definitely be looking for a big stack of points to haul themselves up into those semis. 26M is Bryce Carter, 27 is Matt Coombe, 31 of Chloe Ingram, 34 Kane Hansen, the 87 of Hadley Dixon, and 915 of Ash Hancock. For the Gladiators, the 5G of Kane McDonald. I'll just have a look at that on us, as the screen's just gone dark. 5G Kane McDonald, 13G of Lucas Haye. 164 of Will Carr, 96G of Brad McGee, and the 185G of Willie Stevenson. Big race here for the Gladiators on 110, desperate to make their way into the semifinals. If a team can pick up the maximum 195, if they could, that would leave the Bulldogs on 195, that would leave them on 240. I don't even know if that would be enough. Already the benchmark set by the Stormers at 335, the Maulers reaching 300, that we know of so far. We don't have the confirmed result for that just yet. And then it's the Pumas that are currently on 135. They'll be looking for a big one in their final run. So will it be the Pumas and the Gladiators that make those semis? Well, there's everything to play for here. We still have those three teams races to go. Pit gate getting locked and loaded thanks to Fence Direct. So they're making short work of that roller this time on that track, doing a brilliant job. Honestly, like everybody saw it around, what, around three, four o'clock today, you wouldn't have thought this track would be like it is right now. Don't forget tomorrow's racing. The pit gates open at 11am. Racing from 3pm, so the public gates will open one hour early at 2pm. Don't need to bring your food, don't need to have a big lunch. We've got plenty of great food and drink here for you. Looking forward to the Peter Barry Memorial Teams finals tomorrow. Of course, we have our Peter Barry Memorial T-shirt auction tomorrow night as well, signed by the winning team. And again, we have to thank the Napier City Council and Century Batteries. Century Batteries are just batteries that last and last.
Hey, Mike, do I have enough time for an interview while there's a little bit of track prep going on?
Not just at the moment. We've got the cars coming up onto the grid.
Oh, they are? Okay, I'm just down here with the Maulers team. I thought you might want to speak to someone, but I'll get back to them for you, I promise.
Absolutely afterwards. Let's have a look at the 27 car that has just gone to the grid first for the Bulldogs, Matt Coombe. So the Bulldogs lost the toss in this one, and they have to start from the inside. The Gladiators winning that toss and electing to go from the outside. Final row just coming in now. Well, can the Gladiators reach the semifinals for the second straight year? As they go in search of making amends for the losing final last year. The form book has been thrown out the window. Just waiting for the Mearney Speedway pace shoot to make its way off the track. Here we go. Lights will go out, wait for the green. Let's go, teams racing again. That outside row, hard on the brake. 164 Will Carr on the brakes there, holding up the 31 of Chloe Ingram. Remember Ingram was right involved in the mix last time. And it's the 185 of Stevenson. Stevenson will want to make amends in this race. Remember, he got a DQ for running across the pole line. Actually cost that team some points. Are they valuable? Will it be crucial? Well, we'll know in another nine laps. Stevenson in front, giving chases the 27 of Matt Coombe for the Bulldogs. The 13G car getting by. So Lucas Haye will cross the line there in third place as the 164 gets dealt too. Willie Carr gets spun. So currently it's Gisborne, the Bulldogs then, Gisborne and the Bulldogs. 185 Stevenson, the race leader. Oh, big hit there. Well, it wasn't actually that big a hit, but I thought that the 31 of Chloe Ingram was going to ride over the top of the five car of McDonald from the Gladiators as we go red. And will McDonald be able to back out of that situation?
That's 26M stuck up there, Mike.
Oh, it's 26.
Yeah, Chloe Ingram's just sitting on the start-finish line on the infield.
Okay, couldn't see that. Ah, right behind that light pole that's in front of me up here in the box. Or is it just because I'm short? I don't know.
Oh, it might be because you're short.
Yeah, thanks.
I can see you from here.
So they will give the five car a chance to back out of that situation?
Yeah, I'm not sure what happened to Chloe Ingram. She was cruising along the back straight there and then just rolled to the infield. So whether she's got mechanical issues and get gone again, but she definitely takes a beating when she's out there and she's a solid unit in that tank, that's for sure.
Yeah, well, that car did take a lot of hits in that first teams race, so maybe it's just something that they missed and didn't notice and it's popped off, who knows?
Yeah, that's it. They did have the car with the clutch issues, they got that going, and he jumped in to belt up to come out here and blew the clutch again.
So they're happy to leave them there. We go teams racing once again, and we see that 26 car, 27? No, it is the 26. Yeah, Carter, and they're still locked together, just dragged them off the racetrack. Willie Stevenson is the race leader for the Gladiators. Second place now, I think, is the 27 car of Luke, 27 of Matt Coombe. And we see the 13 car going into the grass there, Lucas Haye. He will turn around, redress. As Stevenson goes by. Four laps to go. 164 Willie Carr trying to hold back the 27 of Coombe. Blocks the Bulldogs driver. Stevenson now coming around, has to be cautious with the 34 of Kane Hansen lying in wait. Hansen mistimed his hit. Stevenson gets by, three to go. Currently it's the Gladiators, Bulldogs, Gladiators, Gladiators. That's how it looks on the screen at the moment. Stevenson has a teammate in front this time, the 13 of Lucas Haye. Looks like the Bulldogs are done for in this race. The 34 of Hansen again taken to the grass. And Stevenson will get a white flag this time, one lap to go. He's going to go from zero to hero. 164 lying in wait. Willie Carr will go into block mode on the 27 of Coombe. Coombe tries to attack the rear of the 64, 164. Checkered flag about to come out for the 185. Stevenson's going to win it and take at least 100 points here for the Gladiators. Matt Coombe, I think, is going to pick up the second place for the Bulldogs. Next is the 13G of Lucas Haye. Despite all those hits that he put in and took, Haye's still managing to complete eight laps of this teams race. 164 car again has pinned another driver into that wall, the 34 of Hansen. And checkered flag was still green, so Will Carr will pick up fourth place, the 164G. And it looks like it is a provisional, so have a look. Willie Stevenson, 185G takes the win. 27M for the Bulldogs, Matt Coombe second, 13G Lucas Haye in third. 164G Will Carr, fourth, and 34M for the Bulldogs, Kane Hansen, fifth. Was five finishes in that race, so we'll just wait for a provisional result. And that'll be it, job done, and well, championship over for the Bay Park Bulldogs. And we'll have to wait to see if the Gisborne Gladiators have enough points to reach those semifinals. Give them a round of applause as they come round. Willie Stevenson getting a DQ in race number one, coming back strong with a heat race win for the Gisborne Gladiators in race two. And that'll be a provisional result of 145 points to the Gladiators, for 50 for the Bulldogs. I don't know if Bianca's still pit side. Have you got one of the Maulers drivers lined up down there?
I knew you were going to ask me that, Mike. I was actually just trying to have a quick sip of my coffee, so let me walk down here. I'll see if I can find Isaac. Anybody? They actually all disappeared. They must have been in a little team huddle somewhere.
Celebrating. Celebrating.
Celebrating, I'd say so, yeah. There is somebody in the trailer with no clothes on, so I'm going to walk away now, I will come back though, I promise. Actually, no, 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 no. Wait just a second, we've got a young man, I was speaking to him over here just a second ago, hi, how are you doing? Put it there again, how are you doing? Introduce yourself everyone who can hear you at home.
86B Brad Singer.
Brad, so you guys have had two races tonight, you've been the victor in both, so congratulations for that.
Yeah, nah, it's been pretty good, eh? Carry the momentum forward tomorrow and be in the same place tomorrow, hopefully.
Yeah, I mean tomorrow's a totally different day, so how do you actually carry that momentum on?
Get stuck in early with the boys and, you know, it's a team and takes a team to get here, and so get stuck in early with the boys and make sure the car's all good and that vibe carries on till tomorrow, yeah.
So Isaac's car's looking a little bit worse for wear over there, he said it's a pretty easy fix, so there's a little bit of work to do on there, but is this your car here?
Yeah, 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 this is mine, yeah, Isaac put in the shot, eh, and it got the job done, so that's the main thing, yeah, cars are fixable, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Talk us through the team vibe at the minute, because every single camp I go into has their own little vibe going on, you guys are having your dinner cooked for you at the minute, you've got some people looking after you, which is great, but it's a nice, really chilled, relaxed vibe down here at the moment?
Yeah, nah, it is, it is. Been a rough week for us all, losing a best mate of ours and then to come out and just smash it tonight was fucking bloody cool, sorry, and yeah, so now time to relax and then focus on tomorrow, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, that is something we don't want to focus on, of course, but I know there is a lot of feeling behind this win, it'd be magic if you guys can actually bring home the big cup for tomorrow, yeah?
Yeah, definitely, that's the plan, that's the plan.
Listen, I'll eat, get back to it, that looks delicious, I might go line up with you, but well done on your wins.
Thank you.
Cheers.
Here we go, race number 10 on your programme, Orange Ruffies back out on the track, they scored 85 points last time out, the Ruffies. And they will come up against the Rotarua Rascals, the New Zealand champions that really are now racing for pride and an outside chance of maybe possibly making it through, they only scored 60 points. 11B Jason Stevens, 23 is Shane Melling, 24 Daniel Melling, 36 of Jordan Awkrim, 57 Daniel 80, 79 of Ronan Emery Ditmar. And for the Rascals, 29 Terence Perry Woods, 87 Chris Shingleton, 91 of Tony Coxhead, 96 Courtney Young, and the 735 Keegan Orr. Rotarua Rascals winning the toss, electing to start from the outside row. The Ruffies with a very, very outside chance of making that top four, so provisionally at the moment, with the Stormers on 335, the Maulers on 300, the Gladiators on 255, that is the minimum that another team needs to try and reach to get into those semi-finals. 195 for a win, plus 85. That could take the Ruffies past, but they have got a big task here from a wounded Rascals team. And then, of course, you have the Palmerston North Pumas team coming up in race number 11, and they have 135 from their first one, so plenty of maths to be worked out here. As we try and sort out the top four for this semi-final spot tomorrow. Pace chute making its way off the track. Let's go, teams racing once again, and again, we see that outside row hard on the brake. And it's the 91 car that will get away. Tony Coxhead leads them through turns one and two, Melling, I think it is, giving chase for the Ruffies. Oh, he's coming in hot! 24 Daniel Melling, I tell you what, another half a foot and he would have nailed that 91 car. Coxhead got away with that, he would have seen a huge 24 car looming in those mirrors. And Melling is not done yet, he's all fired up. 29 car taking in the 57 of 80 Perry Woods for the Rascals. As the 91 car completes lap number two as your race leader, and Melling now gives the 29 car a big serve. Perry Woods wouldn't have seen the 24 car coming. Well, Melling tried to put a hit on the 91 car there, the 91 was actually just, I think, he was trying to go to the infield, there was a problem, and Melling didn't realise that, and he also got caught up. We've got another of the Ruffies cars parked up across the start-finish straight, not a great position to be in there, that's Jordan Awkrim in the 36. There's a big hit up the top turn as well. Race leader is the 96 Courtney Young for the Rascals, 24 Daniel Melling still in second place. Melling has been very quick in this race. We have a look, now we see that we've got six cars still remaining, and still the 36 of Awkrim parked up. Totally missed the incident there that made that car park up, and he's in a precarious position there, but referee's happy, was still staying green. Big hit from the back there as well with the 87. Chris Shingleton putting the hit on that freight train that was just in front of him. So it's the Rascals leading from three of the Ruffies cars, but the Ruffies need a win, they need those points. And they're still going to work, and Melling again doing great work here in the 24 car on the back straight. But no one's touching the race leader with four to go. Three laps to go now for the 96. Melling in second place, Daniel 80 in the 57 cars in third, then it's the 87 of Shingleton in fourth for the Rascals. Keep an eye on the 29 car down here on the pole. Melling really needs to get by, he's got to get by because the 96 car was not that far in front of him. But some brilliant work by the 29 car, Perry Woods keeping them back and has allowed that race lead to open up again, Jordan Awkrim's got going once again, he's going to park it up down here in turn number four. And the race leader will give him a big serve and gets by with just one to go. It's now or never for the Ruffies, they've got to stop that 96 car if it's even possible to do that, because the Rascals here are just racing for pride. 11 car Jason Stevens, he's going to get on the brake and hold up the 29, but here comes the 96 car, and it's going to be over for both these teams, I think, for a semi-final spot. With the 96 of Courtney Young taking the spoils for the race win for the Rascals. 57 Daniel 80 there in that second position. Well, they did really need to stop the 96. Shingleton still revving the 87 car. As they all come under the checkered flag, caution lights are on, it's over. And we look on the screen here, see the 96 are of Courtney Young provisionally taking the win from the 57 Ruffies car of Daniel 80. Rascals in third place with the 87 of Chris Shingleton, then it was the Ruffies 24 of Daniel Melling, who I think was the standout of that one, working both speed and block and hitting. And in fifth place, the 11B of Jason Stevens for the Ruffies as well, provisional, Rotarua 125, Rascal, Ruffies 70. Give them a round of applause, ladies and gentlemen, they're still the New Zealand Stockcard Teams Champions, we know the quality of this team, we know they're going to bounce back strong once again. Well, we could have a bit of a game changer here from an amended result from the Bay Park Bulldogs versus Gisborne Gladiators, we see the 13G of Lucas Haye, DQ for seeking sanctuary, so that has taken, I think, 20 points away from them, we still see 185G Willie Stevenson win, 27M Matt Coombe second, 164G Will Carr in third, 34M Kane Hansen in fourth. That will put the Gladiators on 235. Still currently, third highest scorers. And now we look to the final teams' race of the night with the Palmerston North Pumas, who are currently on 135. Will come up against the Wellington Young Guns, who only have 35 points, so the Young Guns will definitely want to stop the Pumas from making those semi-finals. But 3NZ is Kyle Rowe for the Pumas, 31 is Jared Davis, 48 is Josh Mulcahy, 223 Rattia Robinson, 667 Hamish McLeod, 669 Brendan Tai. And for the Young Guns, 5W Keegan Levine, 7 of Harrison Hocking, 21 Tim Parker, 46 of Ethan Levine, 47 Anthony Hocking, and 269 of Jaden Tai. So the Pumas, well, they need... They've got to beat the Waikato Raiders' yellow total, which is 215. They are currently on the bubble of that semi-spot. And they need 80 points minimum, well, they need 85 points minimum to do that. Race 10 also under investigation at the moment. I'm not surprised about that, there was a lot of interaction with management here, up back into the refs box, obviously they can't talk to them, but there's a lot of hand gesturing and other things going on, so they'll have a look at what they were talking about. Here we go, 269 on pole, again, they get on the brakes. And it looks like it's one of the Pumas cars that'll lead them down the back straight here on lap number one, the 3NZ car of Kyle Rowe, chased by the 47. Anthony Hocking chasing after him, then it's the 667 car. Hamish McLeod is in third place with fourth place, the 21W of Tim Parker. Nice work there by the Young Guns drivers to spin the 223 car around. Rattia Robinson got spun by the 47. Hocking also gets on the brake. 3NZ, still your race leader Kyle Rowe. Rowe comes down the back straight, he's going to have a wingman as well now with the 223 car of Robinson, able to get in between him and the 269 of Jaden Tai, oh, Tai gets a big hit! Huge hit from the back of the 48 of Josh Mulcahy. Parker puts a nice pass in and big hit as he goes by on the 223 car as well. 269 parked up down there on the pole line at the moment. Jaden Tai doesn't look like he's able to fire that car up. Four laps in. 223 just trolling slowly down here in front of commentary, Rattia Robinson's looking for another victim, he's got two Pumas cars about to come by as well, he's going to run block for them. And this is your 1 and 2. Kyle Rowe, 667 Hamish McLeod, 1 and 2 for the Pumas, puts the hit in up the top turn. Looks like that car has stalled as well, the Young Guns driver parked up in two. And these Pumas all in a bunch here. The Young Guns are losing this one, there's a lot of debris, is it debris up there at turn number two? And the Pumas will go to work on the Young Guns car as they come down the back straight, huge hit then, and it was Ethan Levine that got nailed by the 667 of Hamish McLeod. And again, we see Parker, Parker's been a star in this one as well, takes one of the Pumas cars to the wall. I think it's the 223 of Robinson. And it is still the 3NZ of Kyle Rowe, who will just have two laps to go next time by. I think 100 points might be enough. And the Pumas know that. There's not much left of this Young Guns team, in fact, 47 of Anthony Hocking back on the track, oh, yep, we see a refire. And back into it for the 21 of Parker, although he's got steering damage, that right front is completely locked. With the white flag out, one to go, they've just got to protect the 3NZ of Kyle Rowe. And it's fantastic block work to hold back two of the Pumas cars, Levine can't get back on the gas. And Rowe's going to try and go the long way round, and he does so, stunning move! Absolutely, that's bravery at the highest order, what a move that was! Even got by the 21 of Parker. And takes the checkered flag, 100 points for the Pumas, well, that alone would put them into 235. And I think we'll be pretty sure that they would go through to a semi-final. Wow, well, that is the end of your on-track action, but don't go away just yet, we need to find out the result and the points from event number 10, where that's under investigation with the Ruffies and the Rascals. Let's have a look at the result here from that last teams' race, 3NZ Kyle Rowe for the win for the Pumas, 667 Pumas car, Hamish McLeod second. Then it was a trio of Young Guns, 47 Anthony Hocking, Tim Parker in the 21, and the 46 of Ethan Levine. Well, we await with anticipation that Ruffies result. But I just don't think that it's really going to make too much difference with them only scoring 70 in that one, they'd have to get a big stack of points out of that. So that last teams' race, Pumas 150 and Young Guns 45.
Yeah, 269 of Tai, he got his wheel gate blind off in that last lap on turn four, there was a bit of carnage down there and the wheel gate's looking 90 degrees, so a good effort from those boys to try and stop Kyle Rowe.
So your provisional top four, as it stands at the moment, 335 points for the Stratford Stormers, giving them a top qualifying position. Mianii Maulers would finish up in second spot with 300. The Pumas provisionally after that, 285 points. And then you would go back to the Gisborne Gladiators, who would finish on 235 for that last semi-final position. But we still do have to just wait for that heat 10 investigation. So provisionally at the moment, two former champions and two teams that haven't won it.
Kyle Rowe, that was a very strategic race there, four cars trying to stop you, not one of them could get you, they tried at the very last lap, but all too much, there's no stopping you when you're going around the outside.
Yeah, I'll just sort of take a risk and give it a go around the outside, so I had one coming up behind me, so it wasn't much point in sitting behind it.
Yeah, absolutely, because one way or the other, they were going to absolutely try to bin you, but listen, congratulations on that win, but that's half the work done, you've got to reform and refocus for tomorrow.
Yep, that's exactly what we want to go and do tonight, so had, yeah, two good wins, so that bring it on tomorrow night.
Unfortunately, we didn't see our dream race of Brendan and his boy out there, but any luck, we might have to wait till next season, but that would have been a good one to watch, what was your highlight of the night, Kyle?
Well, both races really, both teams worked well together and, yeah, we're happy with that, so that's exactly what we wanted to do.
Perfect, I know that every property... Perfect. I know that everybody's, look, waiting here to shake your hand. I pitched him straight out of the car, so we appreciate your time. Go and celebrate and I know you've got a team briefing, but well done. Congratulations again, Kyle.
Sweet, thank you very much.
Cheers. So guys, that's it. That's night one done. Keep an eye on the social media. The Mianii page, of course, for the updates on that Roughies' win or loss. We're not quite sure. Mike, I think Mike's gone. I don't know if he could update us. But we'll be here again tomorrow, doing it all again for the finals. Don't forget, racing starts tomorrow at 3. Have a good night. Thanks for tuning in. We'll see you soon.